Excellent. Good evening and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of August 9th, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Sudley?
Here.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman is absent. Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock is absent. Mayor Heigl?
Here. Will you join me in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to place items, this is a consent docket, place items one through 11 and 14 on the consent docket.
Announcements? Oh, we skipped, sorry.
Did I skip something? Oh, geez. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Councilmember?
The only announcement that I have today is I just wanted to thank Red Dirt Collective for their amazing mutual aid fair. And if you guys got to come out, they provided lots of bags, or school supplies, and backpacks for students, as well as clothing and food for families in need. They usually do this about once a quarter in Ward One at Irving Rec Center, so thank you. And if you guys can make it out or donate supplies next time, hit me up and I can tell you how to get in touch with them. That's all I've got.
Sorry. Normally we're recognized, so just was waiting for my turn. So my only announcement this week is that I'm hosting a Ward Two Town Hall on Wednesday, August 17th, so that'll be next week, starting at 6:00 PM at the Whittier Rec Center located at 2,000 Westbrook Street. We will have our city manager, Darryl Pyle, and city attorney, Catherine Walker, on hand to talk about the upcoming propositions that we'll be voting on, on August 23rd. So it's an opportunity to come, ask questions, learn more about the nine propositions that we will be voting on. And then we will reuse the remainder of the time to talk about any Ward Two issues that residents have questions about or concerns. That's all.
Don't forget, the vote coming up is August 23rd.
There are several propositions on the ballot concerning the city of Norman besides all the political stuff. After much hesitation, lots of prayer, failure to convince some other folks, I think that I've decided to run for reelection. So there you go, the first time I'm putting that out in public. So like it or love it, hate it, whatever, I don't know. We're trying to do good work up here. I see a lot of good stuff coming up for the future. Going into SEC, there's lots of great opportunity coming Norman's way, and I look forward to being a part of that. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Ward Four is having a town hall on August 10th, which is tomorrow, 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the Oklahoma Red Bun Room, Norman Public Library Central, 103 West Acres. Also, we have Art Walk next Friday from 6:00 to 9:00, just throwing that out there. And then also Food and Shelter at Norman Caravans, I believe, is still fundraising for emergency hotel rooms, so we're not quite out of the heat. So if you have extra money, please seek out both those organizations. Thanks, that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Tortorello?
Hello, everyone. Glad you see Amy Serrato. Thank you for showing up tonight. Shout out to my OTA person. But anyways, I want to announce that on the 18th of this month, I'm going to have a Facebook Live to discuss the propositions for the 23rd. And I'll have to my right Catherine Walker will be discussing each of the items. And we'll have a Q and A on line two as well. So I'll send that announcement out on my ward page, and I appreciate everyone showing up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to announce that this Sunday, from 1:00 to 3:00, I will be at the Cobblestone Creek Clubhouse. Kind of an informal come and go, be there to talk about the propositions that'll be on the ballot and any other city issues that you might be interested in. But feel free to stop by between 1:00 and 3:00. I'll just be hanging out there. And then the following Sunday, on the 21st, I will be at Reeves Park from 1:00 to 3:00 as well to discuss the propositions on the ballot and any other city issues that you might be interested in. So you don't have to be a resident of Ward Seven to come. If you're interested, you're welcome to be there, and I would love to talk to you. And then I would also want to just take a moment and also thank our nonprofits here in Norman and all of our volunteers out there that are helping with so many issues that we have going on in the city of Norman. And resources are stretched thin for most people and most agencies. And so we need all the help that we can get, and we just appreciate all of you that are out there spending your own time trying to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor has none. Now I can get to the consent docket. And I'll entertain a motion, place items one through 11 and item number 14 on the consent docket.
So moved?
Second.
Motion on the floor is to place all, to place items one through 11 and item 14 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to place items one through 11 and 14 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number one, consideration of approval of the minutes. As these go through, and non- No, I'm sorry. Boy, I'm just scooping up everything. Is there an, entertain a motion to approve or reject the consent docket?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second, are there any comments from council on the consent docket? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Nonconsent items. Item 12, contract with HCR Manor Care Incorporated successor in interest to Four Seasons Nursing Center Incorporated any amount of $2,450,000 for the purchase of real property located at 1210 West Robinson, plus closing costs, and authorizing the city manager to execute any documents on behalf of the city of Norman to effectuate this purpose, this purchase. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Recognize Catherine Walker, city attorney, to make the presentation.
I thought it'd be easier if I came down here. Okay, I'm going to go through this presentation and talk a little bit about this purchase. This is a building, 1210 West Robinson, built in 1968. It underwent a $5 million conversion from a skilled nursing facility to a long-term acute care hospital in 2005. It's just under 40,000 square feet and currently zoned RM6, which is multifamily typically. It has an existing 50-bed facility with a full commercial kitchen and pharmacy, and it's been on and off the market since 2015. Most recently, there was a private party sale that fell through last December. The asking price is $4 million. Last summer, 2021, during the council retreat, as we were talking about ARPA dollars and how those would be spent, council identified affordable housing as one of the priorities for those funds. At that time, staff began exploring the use of property for affordable housing. You all had informally allocated 4.5 million in ARPA funds to that specific purpose in your discussions in August and into September, I believe. In the spring, after learning of this failed sale in December, we requested an appraisal and had the property appraised, and we brought in an architecture firm to just give us some preliminary drawings and remodeling estimates. And the purpose of this property was to provide affordable housing, individual units that would be leased to tenants. And I'll go through a little bit more of that in just a minute. But you all met an executive session in July to discuss a possible offer to purchase them. We've got item 12, which is the purchase and sale agreement, and item 13, which is the appropriation, which will provide funding for both the purchase and the renovations. So this is the building, and I apologize because of the shadow, it's a little hard to see in here. This is the site on a map at Robinson and Berry Road. There's a commercial, I think a dispensary there on the corner, and then the facility is just to the west of that. This is what was shown with the listing for the property, so this is the property in its current configuration. As I said, it's been a skilled nursing facility and then an acute care hospital. This is what we got from JHBR Architecture. The question asked to them was, how could we make this into affordable housing units? They estimate pretty conservatively, so hopefully on the high end, a $4 to $5 million cost, about 16 months from start to finish. And from that, they would convert these rooms into 28 studio apartments, just under 200 square feet each. Two of those would be ADA accessible. And then 13 one-bedroom units, just under 400 square feet, two of those would be ADA accessible. That area in the purple would be an office area for a contract operator, and it would include space for supportive services for the tenants. And looking at the funds, this is all coming from ARPA funding, and affordable housing was one of the identified purposes for ARPA funds. The 4.5 million you all had originally allocated for affordable housing, and then you had also talked about another 1.9 million for the renovation of 718 North Porter. Since that initial discussion, staff has presented a contract to the county to purchase that building, so that would not be something that the city would be retaining, leaving us $6.4 million in ARPA funds for this purchase and renovation. The accepted offer was the appraised value, they had asked $4 million, the appraised value was 2.45 million, and that's what was accepted. As I said before, the renovations estimate is between $4 and $5 million from the conservative end. And the total appropriation is $6.4 million, which will cover the purchase and the renovations. Because this was built prior to 1968, we will have to do some asbestos testing. It may have been remediated in that 2005 renovation, we just don't know yet, but we are going to do some testing once the contract is approved before the purchase is effectuated. So the plan for operations, the Norman Housing Authority would provide project-based vouchers. This would be rental assistance essentially for tenants. We would look to award facility management through the RFP process. They would handle leasing operations, property management, and importantly, supportive services for permanent supportive housing. As I said, the facility would be reconfigured to studio apartments and one-bedroom apartments. We get about 41 units total, with four of those being ADA accessible. And then with the housing vouchers, residents will have to income-qualify, they will have a lease, and they will have to follow all aspects of Oklahoma landlord tenant law. And I think that's it, yes. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel regarding this? Councilmember?
You kind of touched on some of it. I know we had some concerns from citizens about the city of Norman owning and operating what was portrayed to the public as a homeless shelter, and it's not a homeless shelter, this is affordable housing. So the city is purchasing it, but we are not operating it, we're not collecting the rent, correct?
Correct, correct. The operator would be hired through the RFP process, and they would handle all of that collection and the processing, and as well as provide supportive services for the tenants.
And so based off of that, I'm assuming that the best way to describe this is, this is kind of similar to an apartment complex. They've got leases, they have rent that they're required to pay. If they don't pay rent, just like any other place, you get evicted. And that's, I mean, so it's an apartment complex, basically.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember?
Can we know who RFP is?
Just a second, sir, we'll get. Councilmember Schuler?
Sure. I think there was also some question about clarification about how much money we were spending, because the two items look, if you put them together, look like about $9 million. So can we provide clarification on it being, the total is $6.4 million, but we have to do a separate item to actually purchase the property?
Correct. We did not include an appropriation of funds within the purchase item on council's agenda, so all of the funds being appropriated in item 13 are for both the purchase and the renovation, and that total is $6.4 million.
Okay.
For the audience clarification, RFP stands for Request for Proposal, where we would put together a list of services we seek and send that document out to service providers and have them respond to us how they would go about providing permanent support, and then administer the rental agreements for that property.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
Yes. So this is a building that's been abandoned for about six years, is that correct?
Yeah, thereabouts. It's been empty for about that amount of time.
So it's an existing building that really nobody else has been, seemed to have been interested in, and it's on a main arterial road as well, correct?
Right.
Would there be an ability, because I know the kind of cost we asked for about renovating and stuff is pretty preliminary, I would say, but there be an ability to add more than four ADA units if we decide that we should do that?
Yeah, I, no designs have been done yet, so all have been very preliminary. So yes, I think we could do that. It would reduce the overall number of units, but you could certainly provide more ADA units.
Okay. And we've had the question too about local tax dollars being used for this. Just to clarify, this is federal funding that was allocated to the city of Norman, and it's specifically for this purpose of providing affordable housing?
Correct. The ARPA provided funding to cities across the country. We received about $22 million and some change, and there are very specific purposes for which those funds can be spent in accordance with the IRS final rules, and this is one of the things that they call out specifically, and that's affordable housing.
And didn't we use a, these same funds to fulfill a funding gap for the EOC?
Correct. The, I believe it was around $9 million that were allocated initially out of that first tranche of the ARPA funds to help fund the construction of the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center.
EOC, that's the Emergency Operations Center, but just, it's real familiar to us, it may not be familiar to everybody in the room. So they're talking about a $9 million appropriation from the same bucket of money to complete the capital stack necessary to build the new Emergency Operations Center, which will house a much expanded dispatch service for public safety response.
Perfect. So just wanted to kind of paint a picture of the things we have used these federal funds for already, and how much we've used of them on some other projects. So I think that's all the questions I have at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember?
I just have one other question. Do you know what the cost per unit is, or is that going to be up to the?
The idea is that it would be something that would qualify with, as low-income housing. I don't know what the exact cost per unit is, but it would be something that would qualify.
Okay.
It would have to be.
And councilmember, we have been in conversation with Ms. Karen Canavan of the Norman Housing Authority, seeking her participation in the final architectural work to gain her expertise. She manages properties much like this. And since she would be providing rent assistance, her ability to participate with the consultants selected through that Request for Proposal process to establish those rates to make sure we do qualify under the Housing and Urban Development Guidelines.
And so I know that you had mentioned that this is kind of going to be income-based, so you have to make under a certain amount of money to qualify to live here.
Correct.
As well as to even qualify for vouchers.
Right.
And the money that's paid, or the voucher, I would assume would cover the majority of the rent, or based off of whatever their income is, maybe the person can afford $200 or $300, so then they pay that based off of their income that they bring in.
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Schuler?
Sorry. Now I feel like I lost my question. Sorry. Let me think about this real quick. I was listening to your line of questions, that's all right. It's all right.
There you go. Any other comments from council? All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to be able to make their comments regarding this item. Since there wasn't an opportunity to sign up to speak in this in advance, are there any public comments from the audience? All right, do, did we have a list at all?
If you signed up on the list, we did have some sign up at the back of the room beforehand. Let me double check.
Who signed up at the back did not have the option for these particular items?
Right, but somebody, some did write these items down, is what I'm saying. So we have those, but then we'll just take them from the audience, and each will be, come up and state your name, like you always do, three minutes, and we'll do it that way. We can go ahead and call on these first if you want.
Sure.
If you've signed up. Lee Hall?
Good evening, councilmembers. So nice to see all of you tonight. I wanted to come and offer my support for both Agenda Items Number 12 and Number 13, because this is a project that I have also worked on with my colleagues in the last council. And I just wanted to point out a few things that I think are really important to show why this is a need that most of our community supports and why we need to meet it. As Councilmember Holman pointed out, we have had the extraordinary opportunity to have $22 million available to us in ARPA funding. In July of 2021, we allocated $9.5 million for the Emergency Operations Center. July 28th, 2022, we allocated $1 million for an NEDC incubator program. We also allocated $3 million to repair a extremely challenged Lower Imhoff Creek stormwater project. So I think this shows the demonstration of the previous council and this council for its commitment to meet a variety of needs of our community and really take a balanced approach in how we have allocated these funds. So in this particular instance, we have known that addressing affordable housing in Norman is a long-term need. This is not anything new. And again, we have been given an extraordinary opportunity to address this need, among all of the others, to take a stab at trying to provide a housing option that does not currently exist in Norman and addresses the needs that our city attorney so eloquently pointed out of what you're going to get by providing efficiency apartments and single-room apartments for low and minimal-income residents. So we know that this is an important need that we need to address. We have multiple studies that have shown this to us as councilmembers. I think the due diligence has been done on a part of not only this council, but the previous council and councils before that. And we also have a recent community survey that demonstrates that two out of three people that completed the survey are in support of addressing affordable housing, and they would like to be able to have the city in a position to not make the most bang for their buck and take an already an existing building that can be easily rehabilitated. We're getting a great investment in a building that we can rehab and meet this affordable housing need at the same time. I am confident that there was consensus on previous councils. I know there is consensus on this current council, even though we have two people not here tonight. So I just am throwing my support to the council on behalf of the community of what the community would like to see.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Kevin Tobar? Tobar?
Hello? Yes. My name is Kevin Tobar. I am a part of Ward Eight, moving into Ward Three out of my parents' house, and I just wanted to say to show my support for propositions 12 and 13. Throughout my whole life, I've ridden my bike across all of Norman. I would go from my house right north of Norman North and go down OU, go to the mall, grab Chick-fil-A, and ride my bike back. And throughout all those times, I would always see, you know, people out on the streets and people that need help. It's very important that we always keep in mind of these people who are in our community and who are Normanites, and make sure that we acknowledge and protect them in any way that we can. Housing First is a policy that other countries do that involves providing people with houses first and then seeking to rehabilitate them later. And although this is a little bit different than that, this does give a step forward in order to be able to allow people in our community to seek retribution and to seek confidence in themselves in order to come back into this, in order to come back into our community as much more functional members of society. I also believe that it is important to make these different types of housing units in order to support more people in our community to not feel the stress and burden of rent or feeling disparity over different costs within the city, because like it, although we have a great variety of places, the fact of such an urban sprawl that we have and how much R1 zoning that we have also incorporates this difficulty of trying to integrate yourself into this community. I stand by, I'll lower my time, I just want to say I support propositions 12 and 13 in order to make this go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'm going to take a stab that some people wrote down that they wanted to talk about the homeless shelter, and as of the way this came across social media today, there may be some confusion. So if you really wanted to speak to this item, Paul Wilson, this would be your opportunity. Maggie Logue?
I just wanted, oh, Maggie Logue, Ward Five. I just wanted to express that I think this is a good start for Norman. We obviously have a lot of homeless people, and we also have a lot of people that don't feel like they have affordable housing, and I know several people on the council have really wanted this for quite a while. And of course, we need to step up. It's a lot of money. I just hope that this is the best way to go. I've been in that building, I've worked in that building. It's a good building, it's set up pretty nice. I do have a concern or a question that maybe somebody can answer. You know, when it was a nursing home, you know, there's general kitchen facility and all that, because they fed everybody. So are these apartments going to have their own kitchenettes? Is that part of the renovation, or how is that going to be addressed as far as feeding people that live there?
It is not intended to operate with a central kitchen to provide meals to all. There will be kitchenettes in the one-bedrooms and an opportunity for some cooking and a sink in the studio units.
Okay, and then my other concern is, are there going to be rules like no drugs, basically no drugs, you know, no this, no that? I mean, is this going to be regulated to where that facility is going to be safe and people are going to take pride in living there? Because I think that's important for the people that are going to live there.
There are currently dozens of units operated by the Norman Housing Authority in Norman, and I think our police department will tell you, they do not result in any calls for service that are out of the ordinary of any other housing units in Norman. And the same rules and regulations would apply with Section 8 housing vouchers through the Housing Authority. They do have very strict rules and the ability to withdraw those housing vouchers for not following the rules.
My other question, and I don't know if it was answered, as far as the renovations, how, what's the timeline here? What are we talking?
16 months from start to finish.
Okay. And you may have said that, I may just have missed it. Well, anyway, I just wanted to let you all know that I am in support of this. I think we need to take care of some business that we've been ignoring. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Justice Shepard?
Evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Joe Shepard, and I've only been here about 13 years, so you'll notice I have an accent. It's from New England, I'm a Bostonian. But the governments, local, state, and federal, are all the enemies of the people. Our founding fathers knew that. That's why they enacted the Constitution, to protect us from our government. They were the main threat we faced, they still are, as you saw with what went on at Mar-a-Lago. They're the enemy, the government. So, no government agency should provide housing for anyone. If I have to pay to supply housing for other people, how do I pay for my own house? What's going to happen with the price of gas is going through the roof? Driving, I live out in East Norman, by Lake Thunderbird. Driving to get in here, now it costs me twice what it used to cost me because of the government. The food costs almost double because of the government. The government is the enemy. They don't solve any problems, they create them. No good thing will come out of this housing situation, nothing good. I'll give you an example. Medicare, it passed in 1965, I believe. In 1965, my first child was born. I worked at a company, Bethlehem Steel, and a reinforcing bau warehouse, and I was a clerk there. I made $89 a week. My insurance did not cover the birth of that child or the prenatal care. I had to pay that out of my $89 a week, a little more than twice the minimum wage. Could you do that today? Twice the minimum wage? Could you afford to cover the hospital, the delivery, and the prenatal care? You could not. And that is because of the government. Before the government got in there and screwed it all up, you could afford it. The government is the enemy people. And what they did was they forced all the small hospitals out of business because they required them to have equipment the small hospitals could not afford. So you only had the major hospitals all over the country still operational. That's how they did it. And they jacked, the price of all medical care went through the roof. It's no longer affordable by the average person like it used to be before the government meddled in it. So the last thing we need is the government meddling in everything. To me, 90% of what the government does should be abolished. They shouldn't do any of that because they make it worse, not better. They're the enemy of the people.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I think that's all that I have signed up, so now they will just come from the audience. State your name, please.
Sir?
My name is Caleb Reed. I'm from Ward Five. I'm going to take my mask off so you can hear me.
Thank you, sir.
All right, well, I support 12 and 13. I support it because it's providing housing. And the way I see it, there's basically two ways to, for a person to stop being unhoused. They either get a house or someplace to live, or they die. Those are the two places. They find a place to live or they die. Unhoused people live in our town now. There are problems associated with this. We all agree on that. What we don't agree on is the solution, and there's two ways of solving this. Either we find a place for them to live or we let them die. And every solution that I hear here, you can put in one of these two camps. It's either the let-them-die camp or the give-them-a-house camp. This is in the give-them-a-house camp, so I like it. When we close parks, but we don't open a shelter, we're choosing death. When we evict three-year-old homeless encampment, people from a three-year-old homeless encampment with little notice on the hottest day of the year and have no plan for them, the next week, we're choosing death. When we close our night shelters, we choose death. When we make a patchwork of legal exclusion zones effectively criminalizing the existence of homeless people at night in Norman, we are choosing death. When we prioritize high-end development over affordable housing, we are choosing death. And there's a name for choosing death for someone else, it's called murder. A conscious choice to trade the messiness of a living person for the cleanliness of a grave. And we already have a lot of deaths here. We had deaths this summer here, out, some friends here who are unhoused died out there. We can fool ourselves with some sort of trick of accounting by describing and recategorizing and saying, we can use the banality of, sort of, the official banality of administration in order to remove ourselves from the guilt. But the blood's on our hands. If, we can call them deaths of despair, but if it's despair that we did nothing to alleviate and we did everything to increase, the fault carries through to us. The government is meant to be a help for the people. It has no greater purpose. And if it does have a justification for existing, that's it. It's to be a help for the people. It's the vehicle through which we, as a people, provide for our own. The prioritization this city is making now to build Section 8 housing is commendable. It is choosing against death and it is choosing life. I'm shocked to see that a lot of the opposition on this issue and many of these issues has been done in the name of the most famous homeless person ever, who said, "The foxes have holes and the birds of the air have nests, but the son of man hath nowhere to lay his head." Christ, and what did he have to say on the matter?
My name is Lisa Schmidt. I live in Ward Two, 1330 Salisbury Street. I actually came just to listen to the Number 17 on the ward boundaries, but I'm glad to have the opportunity to address this because really tonight I speak for the churches and the nonprofits that Councilmember Holman referenced here in Norman, who work so hard all year long to help the working poor, to help the people who've been pushed just slightly over the edge stay in their homes or stay in housing. And although, I shouldn't say although, my heart, of course, as a Christian and a Catholic, goes out to every person who's unsheltered, I see every week the people who are just that close to being unsheltered. And there are way more of those Norman citizens, fellow Norman citizens. I live in that neighborhood. That's a building that's not far at all from me. I would welcome that population and the opportunity to house people in that building. I too been in that building when it was functioning as a nursing home. I think it's a great solution. I hate that it sits empty because it's a great building and it's got a lot of opportunity. That money has already, my understanding, been allocated. And now we're prioritizing and making choices about the best way to invest to serve all of the people of this city and keep as many people safe as possible. It's a public safety issue as much as it is about feeding people who are hungry and housing people who are unsheltered. And I just think this is a wonderful opportunity, and I fully support it and welcome it to my neighborhood.
Hi, my name is Lauren Vanderberg, Ward Four. I have my own thoughts on this matter, but just to allow my friend over here, who is about to recite Matthew 25, complete his thoughts. "Then he will say to those on his left, 'Apart from me, you who are cursed into the eternal fire prepared for the devil and his angels; for I was hungry, and you gave me nothing to eat; I was thirsty, and you gave me nothing to drink; I was a stranger, and you did not take me in; I was naked, and you did not clothe me; I was sick and in prison, and you did not visit me.'" And they too will reply, "Lord, when did we see you, hungry or thirsty, or a stranger, or naked, or sick in prison, and did not minister to you?" Then the king will answer, "Truly I tell you, whatever you did not do for one of the, at least of those, you did not do for me." And they will go away into eternal punishment, but the righteous into eternal life." That being said, I will state my own thoughts on the matter. I am in support of 12 and 13. I live a stone's throw away from the proposed project, and I honestly think that it's just as good a place for this as any. We have a housing crisis in Norman, not just in this one aspect, but in general, do have a lot of issues going on now in our community. And we are in the middle of summer right now, which makes it very apparent to me that this is not just, you know, I mean, this is a health, you know, city health crisis. Because not only have there been, you know, fatalities from, you know, from summer conditions, there's also, comes along with it, long-term health issues for a lot of the people who may be looking for other options in our community. You know, whether that be effects from the sun, whether that be from dehydration, lots of long-term ailments can come from these things. And I don't think that people should be subjected to these conditions just because we want to build another luxury apartment complex over something that is more accessible to people. I live with two roommates, like I said, a stone's throw away from this project. It's a little under 1,000 square feet, it's modest, but I'm just barely scraping by myself, and I can't imagine what it would be like to be in a situation where I couldn't make that, where I didn't have, you know, the conditions that I currently have. So I think that it is very important that we consider these issues very strongly. It's very important to me. Thank you for your time.
Hold on. Hi, my name is Hannah Smith. I am in Ward One. I would also just like to raise my support for Items 12 and 13. The other day, in a Facebook group, I saw a mother who, her and her son are medically disabled. They cannot work, and they are terrified because they are about to be forced out of their housing. Their situation has changed with their family. They were already in a precarious one, they have no reliable transportation, and they are terrified. I work with Caravan's, who gives rides to unhoused people around town to help them get to services. And I can tell you that when I saw that post, I thought to myself, "I don't want to see this woman in a tent." It is hard out here, and it is incredibly scary. If we can provide 40 places for people to land while they turn things around and they get back on their feet, if we can provide them just a little bit of safe haven, just a little safety net, if we can provide just a little bit of compassion in this community, then I won't have to worry about seeing a medically disabled mother and her son in a tent. Thank you so much for bringing this to the agenda today, and I yield my time. Thank you.
Ward Three, it's the first time I've been here. I'm just wondering how the people that get, there's only 40, and it just seems to me that's a low number compared to how many people are needing assistance in Norman. So I'm wondering how the people get chosen? If there's going to be limitations, like nobody can have a felony? There's only going to be one person per apartment or, you know, efficiency or whatever? Right now, my son and his girlfriend were living with me, and I had to kick them out for certain reasons. And then when the temperatures got to 100, I'd let them come back in the house. It's getting unbearable, but they're unable to find jobs because they have felonies, nonviolent felonies. And there's a lot of people, I don't understand how this is going to work. If it's low income, if you can't even get a job, then you're just completely out. So, and also wondering if utilities are going to be paid separately, or is that included in the rent?
Mr. Mayor, we anticipate utilities being a component of the rent. We believe it's master metered for electricity, sewer, and water.
Hi, my name's Steve Gould. I think I'm currently in Ward One. I guess that may change if they take my little area and put it in Ward Five. I grew up in Norman, lived here, went off to college, came back here, left for 37 years, spent the last 20 years in California, moved back here in February, bought a home in Norman. Everybody told me, "Don't buy a home in Norman, go someplace else because Norman's got big issues today." I said, "Nope, it's my hometown, I'm going to go back." So I did. So my money helps pay for these things. I have many questions about this. I'm not a heartless person, but I've seen funds used very improperly. I lived in the state of California. I have lived through the problems that not just homeless encampments, but areas where we allow people to do things they shouldn't. I hear, yes, they'll be over, they're going to be watched over, there's going to be certain things. Okay. I just don't hear enough answers. What I hear is a lot of money, and I hear very few answers and specifics on what's going to happen once you do it. How long are we going to have to pay for this in addition to buying the building? Why is the Norman Housing Authority not doing this and the Norman City Council's doing this instead? Are you better at it? You say Norman City Council won't own the property. Yeah, the Norman will own the property. You will contract it out like governments do for all things. So I have a lot of questions. I'm not against the homeless. I'm against those who choose not to live by society's rules, and that's a lot of what we have out here. Those of us that choose to live by the rules, work hard, we may need help, and I'll help you, I'll be the first one, but we don't need this to decay into a situation where we build a San Francisco, an LA, a Detroit. We do not need that to happen in Norman, Oklahoma. Why are we deciding to do this now because there's free money? That's a hook. That's a hook. There's free money if you use it the way we, the federal government, want you to use it. So again, I'm not against it. I would like to see this postponed, and you guys give us a lot more answers, because I feel like this really hasn't been looked into. The last administration started it, now it's being asked to be voted on by this administration, which is half the last administration. That's my comment. I do have one question for Brandy, and I believe it was Helen. Why do you not? Okay, thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Michael Blanc from Ward Two. I'm glad I could make it in, I just got off work. So, I have a lot of thoughts on this, but one I'd like to start by saying, I'm deeply in affirmation of using the money for these purposes. I've currently started in the new exciting world of social work, and on a regular basis, I get to work with kids and families and see what happens when we don't have community supports in our area. Something that we hear all the time is that it takes a village to raise a child and to raise a family. This is an opportunity to start actually building that village again in Oklahoma, and specifically in Norman. I also have the privilege of working with a handful of local nonprofit groups, and I get to go out and speak to folks who are unhoused. And, you know, I grew up here in Norman, and I got to help out with little things like, I remember back when, I remember back when Food and Shelter was a tiny little, you know, soup kitchen out there by Main Street, out by the railroad tracks. I went there when I was in first grade and hand out soup. Who knew that those same kind of services would be things I would use as adult at one point and now help, you know, work again? And the point is that it takes more than just zoning ordinances to build a community. It takes compassion, it takes an investment in our neighbors, and when we And when we have people who are this close to being housed, they need to be housed. When we have these people who are this close, who have gone through all the hoops, all the red tape, all the stuff that we talk about getting in the way, we talk about government being too big and getting in the way, here's an opportunity for us to actually make good on the promises of people who have gone through every extra step to get into a home so they and their families can be taken care of. This is the kind of thing that we need to be investing in. This is the sort of future we need to build in our town. You look at cities that have major housing crises on the coasts. Well, what you see is a failure of compassion. You see people who are locked out of homes because someone has to make a profit. I'll tell you right now, it's much better for everyone if we have people who have a place to sleep at night, if we have folks who have a bed to lay their heads down in than having them be out on the street somewhere. It's safer for those individuals because, yeah, they have housing, right? But it's safer for everyone else, too, because all the dangers that come of folks who need help who don't get it. People have crises all the time, but if they have a home, they have a safe place to seek help in. This is something we need. Please, use our dollars for what they're here for. Thank you.
Left their phone up here. Hi, I'm Dan Munson from Ward 6. So I have some operational questions for this particular facility. So when I run the numbers on this, it comes out to $161 a square foot. Anyone has done the math on that. It's $161 a square feet. $6.4 million. You divide that by 39,655. It's $161 a square foot. That is really expensive. That's not affordable housing. That's expensive housing. The next question that I have is, has anyone looked at taking a bulldozer to that building, pouring a concrete pad, putting up a large metal building, and then configuring the inside of that building to potentially house more people? Has anyone run the numbers on that? Because metal buildings are really affordable. Has anyone calculated the amount of electricity that a 1968, almost 40,000-square-foot building will use? Has anyone calculated how much natural gas that building will use? Who's going to pick up the tab on that? Is that going to be the city of Norman? So this is going to be Section 8 housing. And typically, the rent on Section 8 housing is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $400 to $700. How much rental income will we generate in one year? Will it be enough to cover our operational costs? So these are some of the questions that I have. I also just want to acknowledge that this facility resides in a councilperson's area that is absent tonight. And so I think we should consider postponing the vote for that, specifically because that councilperson isn't here. And maybe they had received a bunch of information from their constituents. And so I don't think it's fair to the city to vote on this tonight just because of that absence. Another thing that we have to consider is that building is generating property tax. If it goes to affordable housing, it's not going to generate property tax anymore. So those are my questions, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
My name's Lanny Smith. I've been here in Oklahoma for over 40 years. I've watched this town go to the city, and I watched it go through some hard times. I watched the oil boom crash. I watched people go through hard times. I've been there. I grew up pretty poor. I had a family. I had good backing. I had a good church background that helped people. And it puzzles me now in today's society where we think everybody's entitled. I don't get this entitled concept. I've had to work all my life. I started working at 16 years old in a furniture factory in North Carolina with no air conditioning, okay? We think we got it bad now, folks. And we go down the road where we question people if they've got compassion. I think most humans have compassion by nature. Why should we give people things? And you go back to the question of family. Where's these people's family? Is it an uncle, a brother? Is it your neighbor? I've got some neighbor members. I've got a first-generation German that came here. She's more in my family than some of my own blood. I help her all the time. I know when that woman needs help. I know when my other neighbors need help. I've got a gentleman who's 80 years old. His yard was up high. I go mow it for him. That's what I was taught to do, to help people. But you've got to want to help yourself. And we've got enough homeless people here. And I like to ask people that work on groups, solving problems. I was blessed with that privilege. I was always told, "Ask why five times. Ask your why. Why five times? Why are you here? How did you get here? Why did you get here?" And by the time you get to about the third or fourth why, you're starting to get to the root of the cause of the problem. I didn't create felony charges. I didn't... My family didn't do it. You guys didn't choose to tell that person to go violate the laws and get arrested and get a felony, so now therefore they can't get a higher-paying job. But there's jobs out there for people. I worked for minimum wage. When I first started, it was $3.15 an hour. And I paid my dad back. I made $120 a week. I paid my dad $100 a week until I got out of debt. I paid my school. Nobody gave me my school. I finished in the top 90% of my class. I didn't get a free ride. I didn't expect to get a free ride. I was privileged to be an American and go to an American school, and I'm proud of it.
Marguerite Larson, Ward 6. And this is an opportunity to help people, which is what we're here for. We're here to help people. We have an opportunity to house people that cannot afford to be housing. And so I want to say something to the person who was talking about Section 8 housing and that the rent runs around $700. I live in a house. If I had to pay $700 a month, I wouldn't be able to do it. And I work full-time. I'm 70 years old, and I'm still working full-time. So the majority of people who are needing assistance are this close, and you have no idea what goes on in there. It could be an accident. They could have lost a job. They could have had a bazillion dollars in health bills. So you have no idea what the people are struggling just to put a roof over their head and not having to decide, "Am I going to put food on the table, or am I going to have a roof over my head?" And I think the time has come where you have the opportunity to stop this crap, help these people, and allow them to better themselves and become citizens, which is really what all they want. Everybody just wants to feel like they've made a participatory effort. Everybody wants to feel that way. So you have the obligation, you have the ability to enhance these people's lives and to give them something to give back to the community that is giving to them. Thanks.
Smith, Ward 4. And I would just like to put a hold on this for right now until the people of Norman understand more about what the final plan was going to be. The gentleman made some pretty good comments on what it might really cost to operate this building. Do we really know how much it's going... What the operating costs for the building are? How much the rents are going to pay? How much the taxpayers of Norman are going to be on the hook for? It doesn't sound like we do. It sounds like the answer is no to most of those questions. I'm not against having low-income housing. I would like to see people who have medical problems or mothers with single kids, I'd like them to have housing. I think that's a great idea. What I keep seeing from the city of Norman from the past are these disasters, like the shelter at the corner of Porter and Main. And we had a homeless camp there every afternoon, and we had the police call just about every evening for drugs and alcohol and other stuff. You say that this is going to be under a voucher system, and people are not going to... Does that mean you can't use drugs in this place? I didn't quite hear the answer to that question. If the answer is yes, then I'm more for it. If the answer is no, I don't think the city of Norman needs to provide a clean, comfortable place for people to do drugs. That's just my opinion. I would like for the council to put a hold on this, provide the citizens with more information, and then vote on it later when we have more information. We had a $5-million bond proposal in 2020. It was to build a homeless shelter. The voters voted it down overwhelmingly. They said, "We do not want to be in the homeless shelter business." Why is this coming up now? We're going to spend $6.4 million instead of $5 million, and it's not going before the people at all. Most people in Norman don't even know about it. We're just kind of sneaking it in under the rug. Let's put a hold on it, vote on it later, give us more information about the operating cost of this building, what the rules will be for the people who are in there. That's my...
Ms. Paul Wilson, I am a resident of Ward 1. I am actually in favor of this for several reasons. Number one, if we can help 40 people get off the street and get into a place, number one, it gives them an address. That's the number-one thing you need to get a job. You need to have a place of residency. It'll help them. And on top of that, if we help 40 people now, and we are a success with this, it'll give the people of Norman a sense of trust in the city. And maybe next time, when a bond comes up for $5 million to build a homeless shelter, we will have a winning track record with this facility. I wasn't going to come up here and speak earlier. I was on the list. But after listening to some of the people, I mean, I've talked to, I believe, councilmember from Ward 1, either the current and the previous. And I were for one and for helping the homeless. Me and my wife lived in another city. We were homeless. We wish we had something like this when we were there. When we were there and we finally found a job, we didn't have a Section 8 voucher to fall back on. We either made it with the full rent or no rent. And for one, this facility is a good stepping stone to helping everyone that is unhoused. I have always been a proponent to helping the homeless. I will help anybody and everybody under the sun with the last shirt off my back. I've done it several times, and I have been burned. I still continue to do it because it is the right thing to do. And like I said, this facility, yeah, it's $6.4 million, and the last one was $5 million. Well, we do live in the age of inflation. So $5 million a couple of years ago is now $6.4. So if the citizens of Norman didn't want to spend $5 million, or they definitely don't want to spend the $6.4, maybe they should have approved the $5 million. I know with this facility, as long as it has the right structure, it can definitely help out numerous people and be a stepping stone for the future. So that way, we don't have to worry about an unhoused population. Thank you.
Under Gould, I live in Ward 1. And as you heard my husband say earlier, we came back home from California. California is the example of what not to do. Washington State is the example of what not to do. We have to have some facilities available, I agree with you, for those that have a hard time with low-income housing. But you've got to also let the citizens know, what is this going to cost us long run? What's it going to cost us 10 years from now and 20 years from now? Because just as inflation goes up, so do the prices to keep people housed, electricity, gas, everything else to operate that building. My personal opinion is $161 a square foot is ridiculous. I could build my house a mansion for that price. I, too, come from poor people. And I had to work my fanny off to get and to accomplish what we set out to do when we met and we married. It was our responsibilities. It was no one else's. We have taken our struggles on our backs and taken care of it ourselves in the past. My family had to pull their bootstraps, two bootstraps, up in order to get through life. Life is hard, really, really hard. But you also need to be fair to the people of Norman to let us know what this is going to cost us long run. "Oh, we've got the money from the government. Let's spend it." But there is a long-term run with that. And I want to know what it's going to cost me 20 years from now when I'm still here. Thank you.
I think I stood up like four times or something. Too anxious. Cindy Rogers, Ward 4. I'm going to read the city's preamble because I'm a little concerned that people don't really understand what our city is supposed to be doing. "We, the people of the city of Norman, in order to secure the benefits of home rule, to encourage efficient and businesslike methods in the transaction of municipal affairs, to promote civic advancement and general welfare, and to protect the human rights and personal dignity of all persons, do ordain and establish this charter for the city of Norman." You are us. You're not our enemy. I am strongly in favor of these items. We have done extensive studying of the housing problem. I think there were multiple studies. Those of us who have been here have seen these studies and have participated in the sessions. We've done the housing gap. We understand that affordable housing is a problem. The private market is not going to build affordable housing. That's not their gig. It's not supposed to be their gig. We shouldn't expect housing gap to be solved by private markets. So this is a perfect and a really rare opportunity. There's this building doing nothing. It's sitting there empty, just decaying. And we have an opportunity to buy it at a great price. And we have funds available that's not going to come out of other city projects. It's like the stars aligned here. We did have a bond vote on a homeless shelter, and it just barely didn't pass. I forget. Stephen Pullman probably remembers the numbers, but it was just really close to passing. And I think it was the one that got the most support of all the bond issues that were put up. There's been tremendous support. Homelessness is a problem, not just for the people that can't afford housing, but it's a problem for the community. It's a problem for our souls and our morality. It's a problem for our children that see this. It's a problem for our children that see this and we can do something about it. And I'd like to just say, this isn't a homeless shelter. Housed people right now could find themselves unhoused tomorrow. A lot of people who are unhoused and are struggling right now in Norman were formerly housed. They didn't come here to be homeless. So I encourage you to approve this. It's a bargain. We spent over 40 million on our library. We spent 29 million on the UMP TIF. Putting things in perspective, we're spending, I don't remember the number, and I should, for the, the new swimming gym complex. This is, this is not a lot of money when you put it into perspective. And it's definitely the right thing to do. Thank you.
I'm Becky Bender, Ward Five. And I did come to gather information tonight. The man in the white shirt over here, he had a lot of questions that I would love to see answered. So I would like to see it postponed if we could possibly do that. Thank you.
Ms. Carmen Wilcox, I'm a physical therapist. I do not live in this district, but I used to live in Texas. There was a Texas Rehab Commission that would put people back to work that were disabled. And I helped with that program. I know that the government, the state government, has a program to help people get back to work. So I was wondering if there was any way that some of these, since there's only 40 of them, if there was a certain amount that could be allotted to people that want to go back to work or become productive again, so that there could be a rotation of people out and there would be people coming in that need more paid space. So, I mean, there are some that definitely can't. The mentally, the mentally disabled can't do it. Some of the people that are just very incapable of working. But there could be a minority of these that could be used and rotated and they have, be accountable and say, you have to go find a job or go to the state and find a facility that you can work for or that will help you find a job or accommodate you to work. So there are options out there. You just have to look. And if we can be proactive and get the state involved in it as well, we can also provide an avenue to make it a rotational facility for other people as well and allow more homeless to come in and provide more services for them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Mostero. I'm from Ward Six. I've been here for 15 years in Norman. And I've seen the homeless problem get worse over like the last five or six years pretty badly. And I think if we do more homeless outreach, it's going to attract even more. And I think the problem is going to go in a compounding direction in the wrong way. Other cities have had this kind of a similar philosophy of, you know, tons of compassion and very emotional and not logical, you know, points of view. And I think it's been to their ruin. I think Portland is a great example of that. Yeah, yeah, yep. This sounds like it's going to be a city-owned building, but it's going to have a third-party property manager. And I'm concerned that the third-party property manager won't have the same interests in it as if it were private, as in like upkeep and things like that. And I'm concerned that it's going to be our, our tax dollars to, to keep it up because it's not going to be a revenue generating facility. It's going to be a tax dollar-supported facility. And I hear a lot about the, the low income vouchers that are going to be given to the people who live there. And if they basically pay nothing or near nothing, then it is a homeless shelter. It's being presented as like low income housing. But if it's being propped up by taxpayer dollars, it basically is a homeless shelter. And I don't really think that this is, it's being presented as like these are free tax dollars that we have available, but really these are our federal tax dollars at work. And it's going to be our state tax dollars to maintain it. And I think if, if you build it, they will come. If we house 40 people off of the street, we're going to get about 400 more. And that is a problem that we've had. You can laugh your ass off, I don't care. That's a problem that we've had because a lot of the homeless people that we have are here not from Oklahoma. They're from out of state and they've drifted in here because they have heard that there's so much outreach and so much free stuff. Food and Shelter for Friends was presented as, as like this very compassionate project. And it's a nightmare. For the people who have lived around it, they have nothing but bad to say. The people who volunteered there, they have very bad things to say about it. So that's what I have to say. I'm very much against this, this, this proposition.
Steve Ellis, Ward Four. After listening to a lot of the comments tonight, it seems to me that items 12 and 13 are pretty much a no-brainer. No one here tonight, with just a couple of exceptions, is even asking for a no vote from you. At most, they want you to put a hold on it. So you, maybe you do want to consider that. But I think you should vote yes. So Norman needs affordable housing. I think that much is clear. We know that from our housing study. The price is actually pretty good for this property. $160 per square foot approximately is only $10 per square foot more than what I just looked up, which is the median housing price in Norman. And the median doesn't take into account all the high-end housing very much. So it's actually a pretty good price, given that we're going to have to invest a bunch of stuff in it. Concerns about the people who live in the housing strike me as misguided. I mean, if what you hate is homelessness, then purchasing this building is a great idea. If what you're opposed to are the kind of people who end up housing insecure, then I think that's probably based on a misconception. I think that's based on some fear. And the misconception is that people move from across the country to come to Norman so they can camp in the heat in order to be homeless here. We don't have that great a homeless services, it turns out. Almost everybody in Norman who is homeless is homegrown. I did some driving for caravans sort of during an emergency. And I, I've met a lot of people and they're, they tend to be okies, it turns out. People do better when you give them a hand. Norman helps a lot of people. It gives a lot of people money, it turns out. So we heard Lee Hall give a big list of that. We help businesses, we help OU, we help people who want sporting facilities. We have this whole Norman Forward Program. The people who we haven't really given any funding to are the people who are the most down on their luck. And I think this is our opportunity to step up and do this. One final point, this is not really a big government program. Voting no today isn't going to get rid of the government. We can't rebate this money to the US Armed Forces, right? It won't even stop Norman from spending this money because it's already in our account, right? We already spend a lot of this money. We operate a lot of housing already, so we're not getting rid of that through the Norman Housing Authority. Voting yes on this item won't change any of that. But remember, if you can't vote yes, don't vote no. Vote to postpone, right? Listen, if you're going to be worried about some of the things that people are raising tonight, that's reason for you to get more information and we'll help guide you. We can help you meet some people and see who you would be helping. But don't just reject them out of hand. That really.
I'm Gene Barnes on Board Eight. Many years ago, I stood in front of this body of your councilman, probably different ones, different mayor, and was able to start housing for homeless people at Mission Norman. We, we had about seven acres and we did a, I forget what they call it, anyway, developed it in, in this body, allowed it. Mayor Rosenthal was mayor at that time. And what we did, we copied the idea of, of the city rescue mission. And for people, we have a fourplex that's built and it's been built now about five or six years. And we've had many homeless families with children go through this. If they had to pay money to get into the building, they could have never done it. And if we're talking about this building, they had to allow, have some money to pay and monthly rent. If they're homeless, they can't do that. They don't have the money. So we allowed them to move in. We paid the utilities, but they had to start, get a job. And we opened up bank accounts where it unit one or the unit two, because people move in and out. And we've had people go through the program and when they leave, they have 34, $3,500 in it. They have got a job, they've got a vehicle and they're off and running. But if, if we do this other thing, it's, I'm not against homeless because I mean, I did it and they're still doing it. And that, that's a lot of money. I tell you, that's a lot of money. And there, somebody said steel buildings, it's much cheaper, you know? There's property here in Norman that they could put a steel building on. And the person that talked about all the expenses that we don't know, electricity, gas, there, we put in geothermal. And electricity is little or nothing. But this building don't have geothermal. And if you're paying your utility bills right now, you know, they're big. So I would, like everybody else, a lot of people saying, let's postpone it. Let's get some clearer heads thinking about it. And thank you for listening to me.
I have a lot of things written down, so bear with me. The first thing I want to say is, as city manager stated, the utilities are going to be covered under the rent. So the renter will be paying those utilities. It'll be covered under the voucher. Mr. City Manager, can you tell us, do you know, once we make this purchase, are we going to continue to have to pay used tax dollar money to pay the upkeep or to pay whatever?
In our conversations with the Norman Housing Authority and our staff that operate our Community Development Block Grant Program, we anticipate the revenue generated from operations to be significant and enough to cover the maintenance of the building and to provide operations for the supportive function of permanent supportive housing. As we learned through our home-based study, one of the things that they shared with us that honestly was kind of a new concept from city staff's perspective, since most of this activity is undertaken by the Housing Authority, the concept of a move-on provision in the lease, that once you have, you know, been stabilized and you've got an address and are able to improve your current lot in life, the ability for us to move you on to more permanent housing and provide this space again for somebody maybe on the verge of homelessness or coming out of homelessness would definitely be a component of those lease agreements. So the opportunity to craft those lease agreements specifically to meet the demands of the city council, absolutely at your disposal.
And so just so the public knows, this isn't something that's new that we just brought and threw on the agenda tonight. We've been talking about this for over a year. It was actually discussed at the last executive session that some council members were not at. And so there's a lot of information that has gone on that we've discussed. And part of that is like city manager was talking about, this is not permanent affordable housing. This is temporary affordable housing that's going to be used to get people on their feet once they're able to move on and get in to rent house or an apartment or something like that, then they will move on. There's going to be people at this facility that will provide services, like you had mentioned. So if they are disabled, if they have drug addiction, if they have kids that they need help with, a lot of these people that I work with in the evenings, that I donate my time and go out in the streets and help serve the homeless, they're disabled. They don't want to be out here in this 100-degree heat. I promise you that. But they physically cannot work to afford, to pay a rent or a job somewhere. And to have a place like this to help them get a case manager, get everything together and get into a housing situation where they have a caretaker, because when you're disabled, you get a caretaker, right? You get to have a personal care assistant. And that includes mental disabilities, not just physical disabilities. That takes time though, in a house, in a stable environment, in order to get all of those services aligned. So we have, like I said, we've talked about this multiple times. This is not new. It's not something that's going to cost the city more money after this. This is a one-time fee that our federal dollars have granted us with the ability to do something like this. And as Lee Hall pointed out, this is a small drop in the bucket compared to the 20 million, 10 million, 15 million. How much did we spend on the senior center?
25 million.
Okay. This is a small drop in the bucket compared to what we've spent on other things in the city from federal dollars. So I just find it shocking that this has even been pulled off the agenda when we've talked about this numerous times. Pretty much all of the council who is here, minus the one that wasn't in the executive session, agreed with all of this. I'm really shocked that this is being pulled off. Four Seasons, I used to volunteer there as a kid. So I was the one that actually brought this up to our city manager and said, hey, there's this empty building that's been sitting there for a long time and it's got a lot of rooms and a big kitchen and bathrooms in each bedroom. And it's just sitting there. And we've got people who are unhoused or people who, guess what? We just came out of the pandemic and couldn't work and are losing their houses and are becoming new to homeless. And I know because I see them and I feed them every single night. They are new to homelessness. They have no idea what to do. And I promise you, there's several people in our community that are one paycheck away, one paycheck away from being out on the streets. And to have a facility like this that will help us bridge that gap to get into housing and we have a small opportunity here and a small drop in the bucket of ARPA funds to finance this? Why not do it? Somebody said this is the working poor. This is the working poor. Let's see. We are all neighbors. Somebody said that this is what you do to help your neighbor. We're all neighbors. These are all my neighbors. They may not live right next door to me, but guess what? When I walk down the street and see somebody suffering, that's my neighbor. And it's my job to help them. That's why I got in this role. That's why I got the votes to get in this elected position. I'm here to help everyone, not just those with money, not just those who don't have anything. I'm here to be a voice for everyone. We all are. And part of that voice is those unhoused, those who are poor, those who are working poor. We're here to be their voice too. Somebody else mentions that you've, that you've been privileged to be able to have these abilities to go to school and work and pull up your bootstraps. Yeah, you are privileged to do that. Not everyone in this society has that type of privilege. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. So this is definitely an issue that the council has been talking about for quite some time in several public meetings as well. So it isn't new. The issue of affordable housing is something that was identified as one of several of our top priorities to try to address in the city of Norman. A big effort behind, if we want to address homelessness in Norman, if we don't want to see people on the street, the only way to do that is to make sure there is adequate affordable housing for people. If we can, if we can prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place, it's much easier and much cheaper to keep them housed than it is for them to go out on the street and then try to bring them back. One of the big issues we're dealing with in Norman and the state of Oklahoma is because it has been so cheap to live here, we are seeing a lot of folks from out of state coming to Oklahoma and buying up all the houses, paying cash, paying more than what's being asked for the properties, basically drowning out people that are local that are looking for homes. Wages in Oklahoma have not kept up with the increasing cost of living in this state. The housing cost, the cost of utilities, all those things keep going up while wages in this state stay stagnant or even actually going down based on a comparison to inflation. So we have people, I've got an email just this weekend from a single mother who had to search out a section. to search out a Section Eight voucher for the very first time, and her email was that for the first time in my life, I'm having the hardest time, she applied, and I'm having the hardest time finding a place, it's almost like Norman discriminates against Section Eight or people with vouchers, and they only give you a certain amount of time to find a place, you have to find it on your own, and everyone that I contact automatically says no, they don't accept it, and I'm on my, I'm on my extension, which you only get one of, and if I can't find a place, and I have to start all over, and it took me seven months to get to this point, so I can't do that, I have kids, and I'm a single mother, every time I ask them for help on finding a place, they say they don't do that, why is there a person in that position whose job it is to help people like myself find a place? Do you have any advice or resources that you can give me, it'd be very much appreciated, I only have till the end of the month, or I lose the progress that I've made. So I've received multiple emails over the last several months, over the last year or so, from people that are in this situation, they have means, they just cannot get accepted for a place. I had an apartment complex in Ward Seven, Emerald Greens, that was a Section Eight-verified place, but it lost its accreditation a while back due to the owner of the complex, an out-of-state property owner, not taking care of the place, neglecting it, there were two fires, roaches, all sorts of things that are not being taken care of, so the complex lost its ability to even accept Section Eight. The people that are in that apartment complex don't know what to do, there's nowhere else for them to go, and so I agree, there is not a private entity that has so far been willing to step up in the city of Norman and fill this gap, and in cases like this, I am someone that does believe that when the private sector can't or won't provide a service that's needed, it is the job of the government to step in and do something. And so I do support this, I do think it's a great use of an existing building that is sitting abandoned, we hear that all the time, why can't we make better use of existing buildings in town that are sitting empty, instead of building more stuff that also sits empty? And I think this is an opportunity for us to do that. I do, however, agree that there are questions, that I think a lot of folk, valid questions, that a lot of folks would like to have answered about the operation and so on with this, and given that, and the feedback we've heard tonight, I would be prepared to vote for this tonight, but I would also definitely be prepared to support a postponement, especially since two council members are missing, and specifically the council member whose ward this resides in as well, so, actually, and so that's all I have for now, thank you.
First, I want to say thank you to you all for being here, and for speaking to us about these two items tonight, and for everyone who emailed their concerns or, and/or support to us over the course of, I guess, the last day since it was brought to people's attention. I do also want to say that I understand that the reason that you're here is because you, in some ways, were misled about what this facility was going to be used for, and so I apologize for that, and, you know, I hope that some of your concerns through this discussion, through the presentation by our city attorney tonight, and then some of the questions that we asked have been addressed. I do believe that there have been some other questions that have arisen during the comment period, and so there are a few things, I do remember my question from earlier, and it was really just to kind of get it on record, but I want people to understand that when we purchase an asset, a building, and renovate it, and then look to contract with another entity, that does go through that RFP, the Request for Proposal process, so that is another item that will have to come to council, that will be discussed at length, about what services are going to be provided, how the facility is going to use by that contracted entity, and so that is another step in the process, where we have the ability to communicate to you all, to hear conversation, to hear concerns, to be addressed about what type of service, how rent will be facilitated, all of those things that you've been addressing today, so this right now is not the final part in this process, so I do want to be clear that there is more to come in this conversation. What if, you know, we move this forward tonight, there are still pieces that need to come forward, about who will run the programs within the facility, that's not something that we can do in one fell swoop with our votes tonight. So it is a multi-step process to get to the point where we are facilitating services within, you know, this building, moving forward. I also want to talk about that, yes, we will own the property, that it will be an asset of the city, and then we will contract with someone to provide services, so just so that is, that is clear. We, you know, as Councilmember Stoddy also said, this is not, the intent is not for permanent housing of only forty individuals in our community, this is, the intent is to have some transitional capacity to provide an opportunity to get people into a housing situation, to provide wraparound services within the facility, like having a case manager, getting proper identification if needed, you know, help and support to get a job, so then they can move on to the next step into a permanent housing situation. So, you know, I hear the concerns, but this has been a demonstrated need for the surveys that we have seen through our home-based study, that have come through multiple times. So, I mean, there are lots of reasons why I think that Norman needs a facility like this, so I am in support of this, but also for, you know, like Councilmember Holman said, you know, I would be willing to entertain postponing this, to have a more robust conversation if other members of council feel that that is needed. I will also make note that this building currently resides in Ward Eight, but if the proposed boundaries are changed, as they have been proposed tonight, that will move into Ward Two, which will be in my ward. So just kind of to make that clear, we are moving towards a process where this facility will reside in Ward Two. So, yes, Councilmember Peacock is not here this evening, it currently is in Ward Eight, but it will potentially be moving into Ward Two. So, just to kind of get some clarification, but in support of moving towards purchasing, and then putting this into an RFP process, but, you know, willing to entertain postponement as well.
Okay. My votes have been cast, and the motion fails by a vote of four to three, and the reason that fails is because our charter requires five votes to pass any action on council, so this motion tonight fails by a vote of four to three, voting against Councilmember Tortorello, Councilmember Lynn, and Mayor Heikla.
Item number thirteen, a resolution appropriating six million, four hundred thousand dollars from the Special Grants Fund, our upper balance, for the purchase, rehabilitation, and repurpose of two-ten West Robinson Street, for the provision of expanded affordable housing in Norman. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt in a second, thank you. Are there additional questions from council? Or statements from council?
How can we vote on this if the other one got voted no?
You're just appropriating funds here, you're not spending it.
So as it stands in the agenda, we are appropriating money specifically for the purchase rehabilitation and repurpose of twelve-ten West Robinson, so we can appropriate the money for that, but we did not approve purchasing the building, correct?
They are companion items, so they were anticipated to go through together.
Getting it on record. So we do have the ability to move forward and appropriate the funds for the purpose if we see fit, so is there an ability to bring item twelve back to a future agenda?
Yes, that could come back to council at any time as a contract, it's not subject to the same limitations that zoning items are.
So the same would be if this item number thirteen fails as well, we would also have the ability to come back and appropriate these funds for this purpose, correct?
Just to clarify, so the question is, are we voting to reject item thirteen?
Your motion on the floor is to adopt.
To adopt thirteen, alright.
Dan Munson from Ward Six, I have additional operational concerns specific to construction, so we know this building was built in nineteen sixty-eight, what we don't know is if there's asbestos, and I know that there was an architect estimate of between three and five million dollars for the renovation of this facility, what I don't understand is if that included any kind of asbestos abatement. Also, prior to nineteen seventy, lead paint was an issue, and so do we know if that facility has lead paint, and is the architect engineering, including lead paint abatement on it? If I take potential rental revenue, so let's say it's five hundred dollars a month, whether it be a voucher, or however that's paid, if it's five hundred dollars a month, there's forty-one units, that'd be twenty thousand, five hundred dollars a month, and that comes out to two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars a year, and so I'm not convinced that we can run this facility for two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars a year, based on a five hundred dollar per month rental income, and so I would like more consideration given to really laying out all of the operational costs, who's going to pay for it, who's going to mow the lawn, who's going to shovel the snow, who's going to put de-icer down when it snows, who's going to pay for the roof when we have a massive hailstorm that comes through, who's going to pay for all these items? And so let's understand who's on deck for paying for all of the operational costs that come with owning the building, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Ellis, Ward Four, I wanted to raise a couple of issues in light of what happened on item twelve. The first was basically just getting clear on sort of what the city is doing, it seems like people aren't fully getting the fact that the city is going to be getting the money from the federal housing vouchers, in addition to the five hundred dollars from the people who are living there, so that's a pretty guaranteed source of income, and I think that's something that we are normally pretty excited about, right? I mean, the Norman is very, very much into trying to get retail dollars through town, and I think that's something that we would be getting. The second issue that I wanted to raise, though, was just a question about procedure, I was a little surprised by the vote on twelve, that there were no votes, because that didn't seem to be like what anybody in the audience was really asking for. People were curious about lots of things, people expressed a lot of issues, and I think a fair number of the people on the dice expressed a willingness to have more information gathering, to try to figure these sorts of things out, and yet, what seemed to be motivating the no votes was getting rid of the program entirely, so I hope that someone will speak to that. But remember, it's not too late, we can bring this sort of stuff back. I was surprised that it was on the consent docket, if there were three people who weren't even willing to postpone, so I wonder exactly what went on with that, but I suppose time will tell, I hope the reporters in the audience will ask those questions, thanks.
Ma'am.
I just also want to second that, that's a concern of mine, Lauren Vanderberg, Ward Four, again, and also, I'm a little concerned with the community of Norman and unwillingness to accept that there might be housing that costs five hundred dollars to live in. If you do the math, in the city of Norman, our minimum wage is seven twenty-five an hour, if you expect someone to work a forty-hour work week, which I would say is taxing on a lot of people, that would, you would acquire about one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars before tax, that's going to come out to about half of this person's paycheck, so I don't understand why we're not willing, as a town, if this is not, you know, something that, you know, we're willing to prop up, if we're willing to make those circumstances possible. I also am a bit concerned that it was not made transparent until Councilmember Ward Two had mentioned that this might end up being under her jurisdiction in her ward, sorry if I'm not speaking correctly for you, but many arguments tonight were built on the premise that one of the council members who's not here tonight should have a say in this, meanwhile, the ward redistricting is happening tonight, or at least the proposal seems to be happening tonight, so I feel like that was a bit misleading to have not brought that up, except for in that one instance, compared to the many people who have built their arguments on it being for someone who wasn't here tonight, that's all I have to say, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir.
Michael Blunk, Ward Two, I also have some concerns, but we also heard some concerns back on item twelve, I think we should just bring up, one of the things that got mentioned was this question of if we purchased the property, we would somehow lose access to property tax here in the city, I think it's always something to hark on, it's a personal little pet thing of mine, I love to point out, under Oklahoma State Constitution, municipalities cannot get property tax unless it is a bond issue, only for a temporary amount of time, so in general, we can't, we don't get operation funds from any kind of property tax here in the city, that's just not how our constitution of the state lets us work, it'd be great if it did, but it doesn't, which makes us different from everybody else, that's why we really heavily rely on retail.
Sir, would you address the question?
Of course, Mr. Mayor. Also, when it comes to the issue of allocating these funds, there is, I have concerns, again, about like this question over lead abatement, asbestos abatement, as far as I know, those are standard practices, anytime you purchase an older building, I live in an older apartment complex, and I had to make sure that my property had lead paint abatement, which, by the way, if you haven't had yours checked, please talk to your property manager to make sure that you've had abatement done, it's dangerous for children. So I think, you know, some of the concerns that I've had have been, you know, about this topic, or personally, just about making sure that we continue to go ahead and make sure we have transparency here on the dice, but a lot of the concerns we've also had had been raised again, had been around the idea of, you know, around the idea that people who are not present are going to lose out on talking for their ward, but again, I'm in Ward Two, and I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I'm excited for it, so I'm hoping that, you know, later in the near future, we can have this conversation again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Steve Lett, Ward 2. Last time I struggled while speaking with the masks, I'll take it off today. I would just like to speak in support of allocating these funds for this. Yeah, I work with folks who are struggling with housing all the time. That's what I do every day. I hang out with these folks. These folks are my friends. You know, they're struggling. I try to help. And like, I'd love to live in a place that made them a priority, that cared about folks. Most of the sense that I get from my life in Norman so far, I only moved here a year ago, so I'm one of those transients, those scary transients that folks talk about. But my wife is an academic. She's at the university, so I'm an okay transient, I think, because I bring you money maybe. That is not going to be spent here on the 6.4 million, because that's, this is, this allocation has nothing to do with local dollars. But anyway, I mean, I digressed there and lost my train of thought, but, you know, I, yeah, so I'm a transient. You know, people love to concern troll all about the transients. Yeah, as Steve Ellis mentioned, most of them are Okies. I've learned a lot about Oklahoma and Norman by talking to my friends in the car. I give rides for Norman Caravans. That's how I know. I learned town doing that. Yeah, so this money, yeah, do this allocation. Allocate this money for these folks. This is an amazing opportunity. You know, there's a lot of concern trolling that I feel about like questions about all these operational things that, yes, they're just going to be brought up in the RFP process, right? I've had a lovely time working through your RFP process before, as you might recall. But anyway, yeah, 100%, do this. Allocate this money. Come back later. As others have said, I don't know why anyone voted no. I would love to hear from Kelly Lynn, who didn't say a word. I'd love to hear from Rashar. You did donate $5 to help send some folks into a hotel during the Crest Encampment demolition. Thank you very much for that. Yeah, but I think I'll just leave it there. I'd also love to hear from you, Mayor. Like, I know you can't respond to me right now, any of you, but you know, you're going to get another chance to talk, so maybe actually tell me how you feel about this stuff, because I haven't heard a thing about how y'all feel. And I really want to feel your feels. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Kevin Tobor, back up on stage. I also wanted to raise my concern over the no votes on this resolution. I hope this comes back. I really do think this is a great idea, and like I said, a great stepping stone to something greater. But I also do have a question about more of the zoning around the area. I like looking at zoning in Norman. I think it's very fun. But like I kind of mentioned before, R1 zoning is kind of all around it, and...
Sir, we're talking about appropriation.
Okay. Then sticking to appropriation then. I do feel like it is important to make sure that these people do have homes. I do think that is very important for the people to talk to their representatives over why they voted no. This 100-degree weather has been very taxing, even just walking from a parking lot into a job, so I can only imagine how it feels being out there all day. But I, like I said, I hope we can begin this in the future, and hopefully we can all come to a more better, concrete resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I remain Cindy Rogers, Ward 4. So, I'm all for appropriating the funds for this. I think that was already established as a priority for the city. I know, one of the few people, nerdy people that goes to retreats to hear discussions there. I'd also like to clarify for some of the folks in the room that we've done almost every project that we do. We don't have the final details of how these things will be operated. We've spent 20, over $25 million just of city funds building the Norman, the Young Family Athletic Center. We don't know what the operational details are going to be. Trust me, I keep asking, and I'm on the oversight board for that. And every time I ask, I'm told, oh, we'll figure that out later. That's the way it goes. You can't know all the details of how a program is going to be run. We're not bringing in novices. We're bringing in experts who do these sorts of programs. So, if that gives anybody cause, we have to unwind almost every project we do, because we never know all the details going forward. And we have council that will decide on what these details will look like. So, to me, it's pretty simple. We have the money. It's federal money. This is an infusion of money to our local economy, because we're going to get the vouchers that will pay for this program. When we're building roads, we, our eyes light up, and we're very excited about that. The ability to leverage local money, and this will be local money from people's incomes, with federal monies for a purpose that helps our local people. So, in that sense, I see investing in people and helping them get into permanent housing. Every bit is important, more important than building roads and bridges using federal money. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more. Are there any final comments from council? Bring Councilmember.
I just wanted to kind of reiterate what Councilmember Schuler was saying.
That's not good.
I was like, what just happened? But I just want to reiterate and just make sure that this is on record in saying that this is not like a zoning thing where once we vote it down, it can't come back.
That's correct.
And are we able, because it sounds like the public is asking for more information, so do you think that next Tuesday, we could do a study session on this?
Councilmember? I actually, one of council's goals was to request the Norman Housing Authority bring in a report on the tools in their toolbox to address affordable housing needs. I was in conversation this week with Karen Canvane of the Norman Housing Authority. She said she's absolutely thrilled. I'll just see how quickly she can prepare. So, it may not be next Tuesday, but in the next couple of Tuesdays, we'll get her schedule.
Well, if not next Tuesday, then possibly the study session prior to the council meeting in two weeks.
That pre-council conference. We will push mightily.
Okay.
Anything else from council? The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our vote has been... Fails by a vote of four to three, voting against Councilmember Tortorello, Councilmember Lynn, and Mayor Heigle.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. I need to call away. Okay. I'm going to take five, I'm going to take a seven-minute break, and we'll convene in seven minutes.
In about two minutes, we will start again. Thank you. Item 15, ordinance number 0212248, upon second and final reading granting to the Oklahoma Gas and Electric Company the right to produce, transmit, and distribute electricity within the city limits and to sell electricity therein for all purposes for which it may be used to the city of Norman and its inhabitants and the public generally, and the right to construct, maintain, and operate a system of poles, wires, conduits, and other facilities and equipment in, upon, across, under, and over the streets, alleys, public grounds, and other places in the city for such purposes for a period of 25 years, beginning on January 11, 2023, and ending on January 10, 2048, subject to the approval of the voters and the acceptance of this ordinance, providing compensation to the city and calling a special election on January 10, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion and second. Ms. Walker?
Sorry, it's a little, little slow. Okay, I'm just going over this real quickly. We went through a presentation a couple of weeks ago that was pretty comprehensive on franchises. But essentially, a franchise is a right or privilege that allows an entity to do some act here, occupy the, occupy the streets and rights of way, which could not otherwise be exercised by private individuals. The Oklahoma Constitution requires voter approval in order for a utility to use the streets, alleys, and public grounds to operate the utility. And it's really interesting when you go back and read the cases all the way back to 1908 to figure out why was this requirement was included in the Constitution. At that time, there was a perception that municipalities were just granting away valuable franchises, shackling and burdening, burdening future generations. So the answer to this, according to the framers of our Constitution, was to give the power to the voters. So it will go, all of our franchise agreements go to the voters in Norman for their approval. It really comes to council because council has to act to give the election board notice of the election. So there's two ways to bring it forward for a vote. Council calls the election. It could also be done via initiative petition, which is more of a citizen-driven process. But even in that case, if sufficient signatures are obtained, it goes to council to call the election. And the question before the voters will be approval or disapproval of the franchise. A fee for the cost of access to the right of way is common. This is called a franchise fee. If you look on your utility bills, you will see that on any utility bill you have. Typically, that is passed on to the customer. So this particular franchise, we, we adopt ours by ordinance and send them to the voters in that form. Some cities don't. We do. It's, so it's giving the grant of the franchise by the ordinance. Council is voting to send that forward to the voters for approval or disapproval. It's a 25-year term, beginning January 11, because the election date is January 10, and it will go through 2048. It includes provisions like indemnification of the city if the utility is negligent in our rights of way. They have to charge electric rates in accordance with the Corporation Commission rules. It provides for a 3% annual franchise fee. And there is a favored nations clause in there, which we did not have previously back in 2017, which means if, if OG&E negotiates a different franchise with another city that allows for a higher franchise free fee, the city of Norman will get the benefit of that. That would be applied here as well. And then it also provides for OG&E to furnish electricity to the city without charge for our traffic lights, our city buildings, up to 0.5% of the kilowatt hour sold to Norman customers in the preceding fiscal year. And then, as I said, the election date is set for January 10, 2023, by adoption of this item and the, and the following resolution. The following resolution is just providing notice to the election board of that special election. And I think it's important to note that OG&E will pay for the election and any related publication costs. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Schuler?
Just so we're clear about, I guess, what a franchise is. I know that we've talked extensively about the franchise agreement. But so that people understand, the city is not, basically, we don't have the jurisdiction or the right to tell which companies can provide services in our community. That is regulated by the Corporation Commission, correct?
Correct. And under state law, there is actually statutory authority that assigns territories to different electric providers. We are required to ensure that our franchise is not exclusive to any one of those.
So we will, we have an agreement also with OEC as well that is a franchise agreement. This isn't just for, this is the one for OG&E, but we will, we also have a franchise with OEC.
OEC and ONG.
Okay.
Correct.
Just to kind of make that clear, that we don't get to decide who provides services within our territory. This is just an agreement with those entities to co-locate on poles and operate in our right of way.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sutter?
Just again, for clarification, if, because this is going before the vote of the citizens, if they vote no on this, what happens?
That's an interesting question. That would be a first in Oklahoma. We believe that they would be able to provide the service. They're here in our right of way. We would be able to receive the franchise fee sort of as a month-to-month tenancy. And we have been doing that since this was not forwarded to the voters upon its expiration in 2017, I believe.
So there's no difference then, is what you're saying?
I don't believe so. I mean, if you think about what the options would be if not to continue month by month, we would no longer receive the franchise fee. They would not be able to, they would not be able to locate their facilities in our rights of way. And people would not have electricity because no one else is assigned to that territory under state law.
Councilmember?
So we've, we've talked about some additional things that we would like to see as stipulations for the city of Norman that may not be specific in the franchise agreement, but are things that we, through multiple years now of discussion, I think the city of Norman, council, a lot of residents, I've heard from anyway, feel pretty strongly about some of these stipulations. And we've talked about how that would be a separate agreement from this, that if OG&E agrees to, it would be legally binding as well?
That's correct. Although not required by the Constitution to go to the voters, it would be in agreement with the city council. That would be subject to your approval. It would be like any other contract that we have, where both parties expect the other party to perform their duties in the contract.
And would you expect that's something we could have finalized before this actually makes it to the ballot?
I think that's possible.
Okay. Because I would, I would say that I'm okay with this going forward, but I would note that, I would think if we were unable to come to an agreement that was satisfactory, that there would be quite a few residents in Norman that may not be willing to vote in favor of this. And with the rate increases and the storms and all those issues, I know I don't know how popular rate increases for OG&E or any other utility, for that matter, are at this current time. So I would hope that we could get that worked out before and that it's satisfactory for everybody and that we can, you know, promote, promote the fact that we have these agreements, legally binding agreements in place, that we're going to be working towards these goals, and, you know, that we can encourage our residents to vote yes in January. So, okay, thank you.
Seeing none. Other, is anybody signed up to speak on this question?
Yes, sir. We have Cynthia Rogers.
Again, still Cindy Rogers, still Ward 4. So, the last time this came up, and I think I had concerns, and I still have concerns, with the length of this agreement. 25 years is a very long time. And once we, you know, pass this, then we're kind of stuck with that. So, that's a, that's a long planning horizon. Once we approve this as, as voters and we lose any leverage to do the sorts of things that we might want, like don't poison our, our shrubbery, and, you know, knock on people's doors before you chop down trees, you know, the complaints that we get, plus green energy goals. So I am against that long of an agreement, even though OG&E will tell you, we have uniform contracts for everybody. That's their practice. That's not really our problem. They can overcome that. Slash off the 25 and make it 10. So, I don't like the 25-year agreement. And I know there was a lot of discussion before when, you know, this was held up the last time, when citizens were told, oh, this is just the way we do things. You have to sign this. And it doesn't have to be. We can ask for a settlement and, and a contract about improvement in service and all the other sorts of things that I'm sure you've been hearing about. So, I mean, I, as a citizen voter, won't approve this. Just say, I'm a no vote. You can count me right now, unless we have, it's shorter, and we have some other contracts in place for the sorts of energy improvements and service improvements that people have been asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Steve Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward 4. Since we're kind of been able to answer questions from, from the audience tonight, I wonder if anybody would address the issue that Cindy brought up, which was the extent to which OG&E really likes to have sort of like boilerplate contracts. I know there was a lot of work done under, I guess it was two councils ago, really, on what a change from those boilerplate contracts would be. And then the issue kind of got lost in COVID. So a little report on whether or not we, what you're forwarding is pretty much the boilerplate contract. If it's not, what's different? It sounded like we're working on addenda, a little description of what those addenda are, I think would be nice. Cindy understands this better than I do. So I'm not a no vote yet until she tells me more about it. So persuade me what's going on here, just so we can kind of figure out. Just like the issue in items 12 and 13, you know, there are lots of questions, and there has been discussion about this sort of stuff, but I haven't heard anything recently about those discussions that were going on in the past. So if anybody wants to fill the voters' in, I think it'd be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's all the questions from the public that are registered. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman?
Reiterate that I do look forward to continuing the discussions about the additional agreements that we've talked about with OG&E and what they might agree to in writing before this goes to vote of the people. And hopefully, that effort might, might be able to persuade folks that are unsure at this moment. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Schuler?
Yes. So I know that since 2017, there have been many conversations about concerns, I think, related to trees and potentially like bearing lines and future kind of upgrades to infrastructure and systems within OG&E's territory. And, you know, during COVID, that kind of got bogged down a little bit, as many other things did. But as soon as this kind of hit our agenda again for coming up next year for a vote of the people, myself and several other council members did have numerous conversations with members from OG&E to, to talk about what those future plans are going to look like. And I think that over the last, what is that, 17, 18, 20, 25 years, there have been, I think, we've made progress in working with OG&E to have a potential contract that the city attorney is working on. We did have a study session to kind of address and move some of these concerns forward. I don't think that any of those concerns are going away, particularly with, you know, the way that our power companies, and this just, isn't just OG&E, this is, you know, OEC and, and others that are related to the way that they operate with tree trimming and situations like that. I mean, we have a tree ordinance. We have protections in place. But just so everyone is clear, they don't have to adhere to those same things because of protection of power lines and infrastructure and electricity to their customers. So I look forward to continuing to have that conversation. And I do have productive conversations with members from OG&E about wanting to be a part of that and to, to come to the table, to be kind of thought partners in what that looks like for Norman. And so that is definitely something that, that I am still, will still be pushing for. And I hope, as Councilmember Holman said, that this will kind of have some resolution before we see the vote in January, because I do believe that Norman residents will demand that there is something kind of written in stone about what will be provided and what provisions and protections and ways that those will be operated. So, you know, I'm looking forward to continued conversations for that before we vote in January.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing none others. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. The ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Motion and second. The motion on the floor. It's on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. The ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 16, a resolution giving the Secretary of Cleveland, of the Cleveland County Election Board notice of a special election on January 10, 2023, to grant Oklahoma Gas and Electric Company a franchise agreement. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 17, public hearing on resolution recommending ward boundary changes from the reapportionment ad hoc committee meeting. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion, so moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to open the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously. The public hearing is now open.
Ms. Walker, would you address us?
Yes. I hope it shows up on the screen, because I cannot read that far. My eyes are not that good.
Give a second.
Okay. Okay. So, Joyce Green with the GIS Department in Planning is going to be tackling this with me. We both staffed the reapportionment commission this time. And I just wanted to cover a little bit of the legal standards for reapportionment. We have some in city, in our city charter, under state law, and then in federal law, which informs our decision-making. The city charter says, "The ward should be formed so as to equalize as nearly as practicable the population of the several wards. Each ward should be formed of compact contiguous territory with boundaries drawn to reflect and respond to communities of common interest, ethnic background, and physical boundaries to the extent reasonably possible." Those are important words because of the population requirements. "Ward lines shall not create artificial corridors, which in effect separates voters from the ward to which they most naturally belong." State law says we need to review and change our boundaries as necessary to form wards of compact and contiguous territory substantially equal in population. We had census data come out. That's what's bringing this forward to you all for a public hearing and then later a vote. We want to avoid subdividing precincts to the extent possible. You'll recall, I'll just do a brief little plug for the charter election on August 23rd, but you'll recall, last time we did this, our process in the charter we were using for the first time, it had been amended previously. And it put us way ahead of the census data. And so, we had a committee that had we appointed them right away, would have sat dormant for nine months. And then they didn't even have the information about the precincts that were subdivided by the election board. So, it was really impossible to avoid subdividing precincts when you don't even know what they are. So, we are coming back. Council rejected that recommendation and reappointed the commission. And we're coming back to you with their revised recommendation with that precinct data. So, under the U.S. Constitution, there's a number of cases that talk about reapportionment and the obligation to adjust your ward boundaries when you have new data. And you want them to be substantially equal in population. That's called one person, one vote. You can deviate to some extent to maintain communities of common interest, ethnic background, and geographic compactness. But you want to stay within 10% from your largest to your smallest ward populations, because as long as the maximum population deviation between the largest and smallest ward does not exceed 10%, according to the courts, the map is presumptively permissible. And when we talk about compact contiguous territory, a lot of people will see some funny lines. You can't draw perfect squares in a way that works with the precinct lines and all the other information we have. But it's not necessarily gerrymandering. Gerrymandering is when you draw boundaries specifically to give a group a political advantage. So, that's something that we all need to watch out for. The reapportionment commission, for this reason, was not given any information about where current council members live, voting history in those precincts, party affiliation, or anything of that sort. And with that, I'll turn it over to Joyce. Oh, sorry, Joyce. The button's a little sticky, to go over the ward changes.
Well, all right. The reapportionment ad hoc committee met on May 25th and drafted the proposal that's going to be presented this evening. They held a public hearing, as required by the charter, on June 15th. And as there were no comments opposing the proposal at that time, they voted to forward this proposal to council for your consideration on July 6th. Before reapportionment, the difference between the largest and the smallest ward was 4,386, which was 27.41 of the average population of the ward, which is 1,603, which is more than the 10% difference permissible. After reapportionment, that difference was reduced to 1580, which is 10% and meets the legal criteria summarized by the city attorney. The changes made to the wards are as follows. Ward one, which is up there right now, received 856 people from Ward seven, which is down in this area. I don't know if you can see it. I don't think I can actually point very well. And gave 210 people to Ward five. So, this little piece was cut off over here. Yeah, this is, the mouse is not moving at all, so you're just going to have to imagine. Whoops. Okay. There we go. Ward two received 912 people from Ward eight and gave 1,501 people to Ward four. Ward three received 768 people from Ward eight. And I think this little area up here, if you can see, it's really the only change to Ward three. Ward four received 1,500 from Ward two. Let me actually go to Ward four, which is this little area down here, which was a precinct change. So, that unsplit a precinct. It also received this little area up here from Ward eight. And then this area down here from Ward seven. Okay. Ward five stayed pretty much the same, but to make Ward one balance out, they lost this little area. And this little area was put into Ward five just because it unsplit a precinct. There were not very many people in that area. Ward six was the largest ward and it gave, let's see, where am I? Ward six, my number's here. It gave 3,960 people to Ward eight in this area. And then it received 800 people from Ward eight to balance it out. And then it gave that little piece to Ward five to unsplit a precinct. Let's see, let's go to... Ward seven stayed pretty much the same, except it lost those little pieces up above Lindsey and this little piece over here. It did not take any population in. And then Ward eight had the most changes. So, it gave a little bit up to Ward three over here. And then it, let's see, where did, where did it alter to do? It received this big section from Ward six. And it gave this little area to a combination of Ward three, Ward two, and Ward four. So, all of that said, it brought everything into the balance needed. And this is the overall map. So, if you have any questions about the process, I'd be happy to answer them.
Sue, thank you very much for your work and the presentation. Does the, does this process take into account the ability for a ward to grow over the next 10 years before the next census?
They try to as much as possible, but sometimes you don't really get the greatest boundaries. You try to leave the ones you think will grow a little bit low, but to the extent possible, yes. But not 100%, just because you have some really bad census boundaries to work with sometimes.
Well, some of the, you know, some of the questions we've had about it is that we do have a couple wards that are completely developed, wall to wall, and don't have a lot of opportunity for new development or new population growth without redevelopment or building up, if you will. And then other wards, of course, have lots of open space that can be developed without going past our service boundaries and things like that. Mine's one of them. And so, just have had that question about how much of a factor potential growth in a ward is.
If they can find a good boundary to bring things down, they definitely tried to do that. In some cases, it wasn't always possible, but it is considered.
Thank you.
Hannah Smith. Cynthia Rogers.
You know who I am. So, I just wanted to appreciate that this was sent back to the drawing board. Obviously, everybody's calm. So, seems like people are more accepting of the smaller changes rather than the sort of drastic changes that brought a lot of concern from people. So, it's important to get right, and I appreciate the process. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Stephen Ellis.
Ellis, Ward four. I just wanted to say, in a certain sense, the sort of Felix culpa, right? Happy fault. I mean, we started too early on this. And we were able to get it done after we've had a chance to look at the precincts. And one of the things that I was concerned about was not sort of breaking up too many precincts. But I do think there's sort of an interesting look at Norman's demographic. And I was looking at Ward four, because that's where I live. But it's interesting, Ward four looks like it actually lost. But I know it looks like we gained just a hair in terms of actual area. But we've gone from, you know, relatively small in terms of population of the wards to relatively large with very little boundary change, which I think suggests that maybe Norman is actually starting to get some redevelopment kinds of issues going on, which I think is a real positive sign for Norman, that we don't need to look for our growth through things like suburban sprawl and stuff. It seems like we are getting some infill. And there's some sort of positive news on the sort of economic development front out of this. And I think it shows that we don't really need to have a lot of the sort of subsidies and stuff that we give people for suburban sprawl kind of things. I mean, the places that are prospering are the places that, where the action is. And Norm, you know, Ward four is definitely one of those places. Not to say that other wards aren't either. There's a lot of cool stuff in Norman. But I do think it's useful to look at these numbers with an idea towards what makes Norman a successful community. And I think, you know, the demographics, at least of Ward four, just a sort of eyeball test suggests that that's a successful area in town that people should model after. Thanks.
Yeah, just a final comment. I just wanted to extend a thank you to Ward seven residents Rich Lubers and Allison Brayley for their willingness to serve on both of the reapportionment committees and their work on this. Definitely a lot of work, and it's something we only do every 10 years. So, it's not something those people are very familiar with and can definitely be very confusing. And just appreciate their work and everybody else that served. And just want to mention, it's a little sad, I guess, that I'm losing over 2,000 residents in my ward to other wards. And I'm actually not, I'm the only ward that's not gaining anybody. And so, it's because partly, I guess, Ward seven is just such a great place to live. There's been so much population growth in Ward seven over the last 10 years. I was honestly shocked by the census data. And Ward seven used to be the least populous ward. And we still have the lowest voter registration. We have the lowest voter turnout of all the wards. But there has been a lot of growth. There's probably a dozen houses a week, it seems like, being built in Ward seven, south of Highway nine. We've had more student housing being built on campus, which is in Ward seven. And so, just very interesting stuff. Population data is one of the things that got me interested in city council and politics and government and things like that in the beginning. So, just real interested to see this process. And if you are one of the new residents of Ward seven in the new development that's happening, please reach out. I'd love to talk and get to know each other. And to everybody that's not going to be in my ward anymore, I just want to say I appreciate all of you, those that have supported me over the years, those that haven't. But it's been an honor to be your representative. And I know that the other wards will take care of you very well when you transition towards one and four. Thank you.
Give my congratulations to the committee on the work that they done, the excellent work that they did, and how fair it seems to be to me. Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Schuler.
Yes. In the spirit of Councilmember Holman, I would also like to extend a thank you to Alicia Cardilla and Lisa Smith, who is here tonight from Ward two, that served on both of our committees for reapportionment. And also want to say that Ward two will officially, if these go into effect, will be the smallest ward. But I know that we are still very mighty. And we have a lot of citizens that are very engaged. So, I look forward to working with the new citizens that I will be gaining kind of in the northern part of Ward two. And also, sad to lose that little triangle down by Imhoff. We fought really hard for the Imhoff Bridge. And I will still be a strong proponent of bridge infrastructure and stormwater. And so, Imhoff Creek will still continue to impact the lower portion of Ward two in the south section. So, those issues are not going away for our ward. And, you know, as mentioned, that was because a precinct got smushed together. And so, it was previously two precincts that now is one precinct. So, I do understand that. But to Councilmember Holman's point earlier, Ward two is one of those fully developed wards that, at this point, has no more opportunity to grow unless we are doing some kind of infill projects or density. So, those are kind of my thoughts. But looking forward to working with the new residents that we will gain, and sad to lose those that will now be in Ward four.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is miscellaneous comments. Are there, this is an opportunity for the citizens that still have questions or comments that they want to make?
Do have a few tonight. Nicolette Collins.
My name is Nicolette Collins, and I live in Ward two. And in case y'all want to know, my 94-year-old mother has lived here in Norman since she was seven years old, and she is still alive and kicking, living on her own. So, don't mess with her. I am not here to talk about homeless population of people. I'm here to talk about the homeless population of animals. We have, Oklahoma has a very big overpopulation for dogs and cats. We do not have a spay and neuter laws that they enforce or anything like that. Our shelters are overcrowded when people right now are turning in their animals because they can't afford them anymore. They turn them in, you know, and say, "I don't want them anymore. I can't afford these animals." They might be homeless, and they want to keep their pets with them. That's their security blanket. And so, we're not having enough fosters. And we have a lot of dumpings, especially out by Lake Thunderbird. Lake Thunderbird is very bad. But we do have one person that lives in Norman that is here in this room right now, that the lake people call when there is a problem, when they have a homeless animal. The people out in New animal. The people out in New Walla and stuff that don't go into Norman because Norman doesn't go out there and take their homeless kids, dogs and cats, this woman takes them in. She lives on seven acres, and she sits there and takes care of these animals. She feeds them with their own money. She vets them with their own money. And she's been doing this for over 16 years. Now, the city of Norman has come out and said, "You got too many animals, lady. You're going to have to get rid of them. You're going to have to surrender them." If you surrender those animals, those are the first ones that they sit there and they put down. The old, do you know how many animals are brought in? It says, "I don't want it anymore because it's old." They put that dog down. They do that. And this woman has done nothing but take care of these animals. She needs a kennel license, but there is not one for sanctuary because that is what she is. She is a person with sanctuary. So, please consider her service to this community and what she does, and change the law for the kenneling license. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And I am her. I'm Naomi Gooch, and I have lived in Ward 5 for 16 years now. And I moved to Norman to start doing animal rescue as my passion. When I moved here, I worked in mental health at COCMHC, and I then changed my career path to becoming RN. And I worked in acute and critical care at Norman Regional to start my career, and now work in surgery services. I have the whole way along taking care of animals, taking animals in. I did incorporate ASA State Rescue in 2011, and at that time applied for my kenneling license. I do not know what or why the process stopped. My check never got cashed. I never got a hearing. Never heard back anything until 2017, when we had fires out there in Ward 5. I was at work. I have a disabled adult who I've also taken in. I am her payee. She is at my house 24/7 taking care of animals. It's her passion. It's the one thing she can do that gives her purpose in life. And she's on not, she's only on her time schedule. Usually doesn't know what day of the week it is, but it's okay because she loves those animals. 2017, I had to call the police because they started voluntary evacuations. She could not evacuate. She does not drive. And animal welfare posted up on my property. Saw no problems with any of the animals. My population, as all of the shelters, has grown beyond what it needs, should be, but it is what it is. And I only take in what I can. I do say no, and it breaks my heart to say no when I have to. But I'd only take in what I can afford because I am not a 501(c)(3). I made that decision to privately fund my shelter and my rescue. 501(c)(3) does not mean anything for animal welfare. It is a tax code. It is only a tax code. Animal welfare is what's important. The city of Norman, like Nicolette said, does not identify me as a rescue because I'm not 501(c)(3). They also do not identify a sanctuary. So, they will not, I have been told, approve me for a kenneling license for the animals currently in my care due to not meeting the verbiage of the current ordinances. So, I am currently working to get my kenneling license through them. I could get it through the USDA. The city of Norman also will not recognize the USDA kenneling licenses, which also require yearly inspections. They would approve me. I do currently have about 60 dogs in my care, most of them seniors, a lot of them biters. That, again, like Nicolette said, they're going to be the first ones to put down. A lot of them are just that, "Well, I want a little dog." No, no, no. I don't want a-
Dave Moore.
For the past 52 years, I've lived in every ward in Norman. The city of Norman has a sacred trust and a duty to protect the citizens of Norman. This is borne out by the fact that we have, among other things, a police department, a city council, a city code, and the Norman 2025 plan, all designed with one thing in mind, to protect the citizens of Norman. That duty also involves protecting the integrity of the Norman 2025 plan, especially as it relates to East Norman. The plan is a promise to the citizens that, yes, you can buy property here. You can build here. You can grow your family here. You can live here. You can live the lifestyle you have chosen, and the city will honor that. The problem is, there are people working for the city who think it's okay to betray the trust citizens have put in the Norman 2025 plan and trash the plan in order to please the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority and the land grabbers they serve, who are salivating at the idea of running six-lane toll roads through the heart of Norman, turning East Norman into their own twisted version of the Las Vegas Strip. The city needs to tell them, "No. We will not betray the citizens who trusted us. We will not betray the citizens who believed us when we told them we would preserve the beauty and the natural integrity of East Norman and the Lake Thunderbird watershed for all of Norman citizens." I'm saying, "Take a stand, council. This nonsense about state trumps city is a load of crap." The state law may often trump city law, but not always. It's not a universal maxim that can be applied to every circumstance, and that's the end of it, not by a long shot. You don't have to do anything to appease and accommodate the OTA's insane toll road plans. Take a real stand and say no. The next issue is extortion. The definition of extortion is when someone uses their power and position to force someone else to give up something of value, like money or property, against their will. That's what's happening in East Norman right now. And even the mere threat of extortion is a crime. The Oklahoma Turnpike Authority is terrorizing the Norman citizens with the threat of extortion. People are being told if they don't cooperate, they'll be thrown out of their homes and lose their homes through condemnation procedures exerted through the power of eminent domain. People are literally freaking out in a panic, nervous as hell. They don't know what to do. They thought the city was offering them protection from OTA extortion with the Norman 2025 plan. But now they're being told, "It's coming through. It's a done deal. Get out of the way." That's extortion. Cities and other legal entities are allowed to sue for the threat of extortion. So, I'm calling on the city council to begin interviewing law firms to-
Mr. Moore, you ran out of time, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Judith Coker.
Judith Coker. I live at Hampton Court. I appear here with great reluctance, but feel compelled to do so by the actions of some council members. As are my elected representatives, you act and speak for me in matters of city government. We all have different visions for Norman, and I accept that your goals for the city may be different than mine. However, in matters of ethics and morality, I think there is a common standard of decency, which we expect public officials to exhibit. Behavior better than the average, exemplary behavior, in fact. And this is where my representation fails me. In fact, I feel deep shame at the way I am represented. I am shamed by attacks on Norman citizens because of their homeless status and desires to run them out of town. I am shamed by denigrating remarks about my neighbors and friends, who may differ from you in matters of ethnic, cultural, or gender identity. I am shamed by claims that anyone not espousing certain political views are evil and not worthy of your time. This lack of common decency is corrosive. I attended a recent meeting in which a city employee stated that they had moved their family to another town because the family did not feel safe or welcome in Norman. Their new home, they said, resembled the Norman of several years ago, when civil discourse and discussion resolved city issues. This information disturbed me deeply. There are nine elected officials on this council. You and you alone represent over 124,000 citizens of Norman to the public at large. You represent not only the people in your ward who elected you, but those who voted against you. You are entitled, they are entitled to your time and efforts on their behalf. Your words have consequences. Your behavior influences and guides the over 1,000 full and part-time city employees who engage with Norman citizens. If we are silent in the face of vicious bullying, we are complicit. I will not be complicit. I ask the council to restrain behavior attacking Norman citizens before it causes further damage to Norman. I further ask the council to use their positions to center behavior that disturbs the peace and civic life of this town. Norman is our home. The well-being of our neighbors and community is essential to our happiness. I hope with your leadership, we can work together to create a place where all feel welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kevin Tobar.
Hello. Kevin Tobar, currently residing in Ward 4. I guess now is time where I can bring up my own ideas. Apologies for earlier, ma'am. So, yes, rezoning is a very thing I'm very much interested in. And I see that Norman has consistent, although we do have a lot of different housing plans, R1 zoning is still a very prevalent issue in Norman. Urban sprawl and the size of Norman compared to its population is very spread out. And I feel like with some wards already seeking that max capacity that they could be hitting, we could increase density, and it would only increase revenue generated by these places with an increase of more small shops, increase of more places where people can live in different sizes of families. Because big lots, historically owned by one big department store, don't generate as much revenue as a small area operated by multiple small businesses and multiple places above that have rent. And so, you know, it kind of makes sense. You want more controlled, concentrated areas that make more money for the city than more big areas that take up a lot of space because they're lower density. Another thing that I'm very much interested in is trains. I saw in the news about a month and a half ago that there was a commuter rail supposedly going to be opened up from Norman to Edmond Oak AC. And I really liked Thomas' Tank Engine as a kid, and I think that trains are a pretty cool idea, you know, with this whole Pikeoff OTA, which I completely agree with, is a super plan officially for the parts coming in East Norman. But what if we can incorporate, you know, trains to help move people along and have a different mode of transportation in the city? That'd be a great idea. It'd be a great medium and help give away these kind of like bad ideas proposed earlier and provided by the OTA and help incorporate new, different mixed-use transportation. I as well am really into bike riding. I think that more bike lanes and more ways to help smooth walkability within the town is very much important for people to not only increase exercise, decrease obesity ratings, increase mental health. Because I work in a pediatric office. I see a lot of kids who are obese. And recently, we had a meeting in that pediatric office, Premier Pediatrics, about helping kids through their nutrition habits by having more extensive talks with them at their wellness checks over how they can increase their wellness and fitness. And the answer is simple: bike riding and walkability. If we can increase that, that will greatly improve our children's futures. With the little time that I have, I'd also like to say that we all need to be united together. There's no reason for us to call each other out outside of this place out of anger and desperation. We need to be together as one. And so, I request that all of us, we can work together as a city, as a people, as one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Amy Serrato. Serrato, I may be saying it wrong.
Hi, my name is Amy Serrato. I'm a resident of Ward 5. I moved to Oklahoma in 2004, and I bought my house in rural East Norman because I wanted to live in the peace and quiet of an acreage and raise my family where we could be immersed in nature right at our doorstep. I did a lot of research, and East Norman appealed to me because the city of Norman promised, in a long-range plan called the City 2025 Transportation Plan, to protect East Norman from development at all costs. There was a one-house-per-10-acre restriction on development. There were no turnpikes or highways shown in those long-range plans. In fact, the city of Norman had just defeated the turnpike plan back in the 90s. So, why 25 years later is a city accepting now that the turnpikes are a done deal? What's different today than in the 90s? Why is your city staff making public statements that say we have no control over where the turnpikes are built or if they get built at all? Why isn't the city pushing back harder against the OTA and saying, "No, we don't want this"? Those routes are not authorized in the state statute. So, stop terrorizing our citizens. You have no jurisdiction to be here. Can your lawyer not obviously see that these routes are not authorized and the OTA actually has no jurisdiction to build on our land? Or is the Chamber of Commerce and real estate developers just so far in your ears about the billions of dollars they stand to make by developing East Norman that you can't hear anything else? Our citizens are being bullied by a corrupt state agency that stays billions of dollars in debt and builds roadways that don't have to make any sense or money. They just build their roadways to make the corrupt conglomerate of contractors, bankers, and developers millionaires. Why hasn't the city of Norman sued the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority? The citizens have filed two lawsuits, and we want the city to get a loud voice and fight harder against the biggest Oklahoma bully on the block, the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority. The city's apathy and the Chamber of Commerce's silence is complicity. As a practicing civil engineer, I'll tell you that these proposed routes have nothing whatsoever to do with sound engineering practices. They are not in the least bit justified. Using overinflated traffic counts and congestion on I-35 to justify building these East Norman turnpikes is bogus, so don't buy into the propaganda. Not only are these not justified, these turnpikes are devastating to the environment, to the wildlife, to our drinking water, to our geology and ecology, and to your citizens. These turnpikes are the most destructive in Oklahoma's history. These turnpikes are all about money and a supposed economic development by destroying the environment and displacing the humans that live here. The Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan specifically recognizes that it is important for the city to control the quality and location of growth and discourage sprawl, protect water quality, and maintain the 10-acre per minimum lot size. Honor the plan. Get vocal.
Thank you, Director.
Dan Munson.
I'm Dan Munson from Ward 6. So, I wanted to start out tonight and say that I am really grateful to the Public Works Department. You guys secured a $2 million grant for water meters, and I think that is absolutely fantastic. What a lot of people don't realize is that we're one of 14 cities to get that money. One of 14. And so, what that tells us is that our grant writers are pretty darn good. And I am so grateful for them because they are lowering the cost, our operational cost, across the city, not just within Public Works. Over the last two weeks, I've spent a tremendous amount of time reading the infrastructure bill that was passed. I think I've read it three times. And what I know for certain is there are millions of dollars that we can secure here in the city of Norman. One of the things I talked about with the old council, but I want to bring it up again, is, is there ways that we can provide training to the people who are doing grant work? Would that be money well spent for us? There is discussion that potentially this Friday, there's going to be another $750 billion passed. That's a lot of money. You tack that on to the $1.4 trillion that was passed underneath the infrastructure bill. I would encourage the council to consider, if, and ask staff this, is, can we provide training to our people to make our proposals, our grant proposals, even better to secure more of that federal funding to help reduce our costs? So, that's what I have for tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cindy Rogers.
Last time tonight, I promise. Cindy Rogers, Ward Four. I really want to thank my neighbors, particularly my OU colleague of sorts, I'm not in the same department, for talking about OTA and how that will fundamentally, fundamentally change our community. And I haven't really been involved in that discussion because, like, I'm not an engineer. I am an economist, and I can do modeling. And I do agree that the models, the transportation demand models that are being used to support the need for the turnpike are pretty much bogus. And I agree that the city should fight this with every tool we can throw forward. We should join the citizens. It's a David and Goliath sort of fight. And that's exactly when you need the city stepping in to protect your property rights. If this isn't a property right issue and you believe in property rights, then I don't know what is. Because eminent domain is being used by an organization that is over the legislature. The legislature doesn't even have control over them. That's not the way it's supposed to be. That is outside of government. That's worse than government because this is a body that's appointed and not elected and not accountable to the elected body at the State House. To me, that's an appalling atrocity to democracy. And it's something that we as a community should fight. I'm a little bit ashamed that I haven't been involved in the fight. I'm a little busy, you know, I do some stuff. But I do think that the city should take a stand with whatever roadblock we can put in the way. Yes, it'll be lawsuits, and yes, it'll cost money. But if you're not going to stick up for people that own properties and build homes and invest in this community and we're here for the long haul, who are you going to invest in? So I absolutely agree that the city should take a stand on this and not just say, oh, we can't do anything because it's the OTA. I think we can. It'd be bold. But if we do it, other communities might follow and join in too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward Four. I too want to take just a second of my time to thank Dr. Serrato for coming to talk about the OTA issue. And I particularly appreciate, as somebody else who works at OU, that she recognizes the sort of distributional inequality kind of issue involved there, right? So the, the reason for the OTA expansion is really economic. And that isn't an issue of a rising tide lifting all boats. There are winners and losers. And the winners in this case are the regular suspects. And the losers are not necessarily the people who oftentimes get the short end of the stick. But at least they recognize they're getting the short end of the stick now. So distribution matters. Second issue, though, I think, is the one that I really wanted to raise today. I think we set a record tonight. I'm pretty sure, I'm 99% sure that there has never been an item, much less two, that were on consent when the agenda document came out. Consent that was supposed to be about regular business, non-controversial items that was both taken off consent. I mean, that actually happens a fair bit. Things, items get taken off consent. But I think this is the first time ever we'd have something that was taken off consent that lost, that did not pass. And I think that that suggests that there, I mean, there's a weird situation tonight, right? Two people were missing. I'm not very happy about that either. I, I think there's reasons that you want to come to this particular kind of job because it matters. But I also think that if there are three people who are going to vote against something, something that everybody in the audience said we should at least postpone, that they should at least be honest about that and not have the item on consent to begin with. So shenanigans having to do with the way the agenda set up is actually kind of corrosive of trust in the city. Thinking that you can slip something past because it's on consent or that you can play around with where you're at on a consent item really is going to mean that people aren't going to trust that they can take vacations with their families, for example. So I know that was what was up with Matt Peacock. So I think everybody should reflect a little bit on how we're setting the agendas in the city in order to make positions fairly clear. If we're going to disagree about stuff, I think that's fine. We're going to disagree. But I think those, it should be clear that we're going to disagree and sort of false flagging on something in consent is a mistake.
Don't know what ward I'm in right now. It's the way things are changing and everything. But I am in, I am in Central of Norman. I'm here to talk to you about accessibility. We're not standing up to her what we're saying we're doing. The Norman Library, the public Norman Library, is still not accessible since day one. I talked to the city attorney. He said it'd be done a week later, and it was not. Yes, I did tell him. He said he'd take care of it. I talked to Sean O'Leary about it. It has not been done. COVID came through. Plenty of time to take care of things on reconstruction. It was never taken care of. It's still not today accessible. It's common sense. You make the doors open at the same time. Then the second door doesn't catch the first door. You know what I'm saying? We having businesses right now. Our engineers are passing permits. Dunkin' Donuts, brand new facility. Has a handicap all the way in the back. And all the cars are going to be parked up on the sidewalk. Do you think we're going to be able to cross through that? No. And they passed that one. Gimme's egg on the other one, on the other side of town. They passed that one when the doors were hitting each other. What is going on? Oh, wait, now I remember. The review, whenever I was there on that committee, it said they needed training for the city officials. Has that been done yet? No. And nothing's been passed. How can we keep on doing this on a regular basis if our engineers? I'm going to start filing complaints on the engineers. Because under the state legislation, they're supposed to be going by those ADA standards. And I'll go after their licenses. Do you understand? If you're going to let your engineers do this kind of stuff and pass these things when you know they're not accessible? This is wrong. And I shouldn't be standing up here today, okay? I shouldn't have to have to do this. Each of you should be checking into your wards, finding out what's going on. Like that new building you're building? Is it going to be accessible? You're going to have rooms in it that are supposed to be accessible? Are you going to, another thing you did not look into that situation? What about if there's an evacuation? How are you going to evacuate those people? Are they going to have a shelter there like they should? Because there's no public shelters anymore. And you're going to have a gathering of 40 families? And you're not going to have a shelter there? Or a safe room? Something they can go into? Come on, guys. Let's cover it all the way. No, you're going to have them running around going, where do we go? Where do we go? Because it is no public shelters in Norman.
All right, that was the last speaker. We are adjourned.